And welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Pender County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Williams to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Brown to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I have followed company this day, thankful for this day which you made for us, the wonderful weather. And we're grateful to be able to live in a county, in a state, in a country where we get to participate in what goes on around us and get to speak freely and have some say in what goes on without fear of persecution. Please guide everyone in this meeting, everyone watching it, so in their hearts and minds, they will consider only what's best for Pender County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I guess we've got a couple items that we want to add to the agenda and take away from the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Before we adopt an agenda, I guess we need to do that. Can I get a motion to?
Motion to amend.
Do you want to specifically state the items?
Yeah, we probably need to state what these items are, so.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm looking at, I'll remove item eight point twelve and item seventeen point one. And I think we're adding, is it item nine point seven to be added? Okay. And then resolutions, item nine point ten?
Nine point eight, nine point nine.
Nine point eight, nine point nine, and nine point ten.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you to Commissioner Brown for those details. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Go ahead.
We have a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous, so that motion carries. Now we can adopt the agenda. Item four.
Motion to amend.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. All those in favor? It's unanimous also, so we have adopted our agenda. Now we'll move on to item five, presentations, five point one. Resolution requesting funding for a ten mile, ten mile parallel line for the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Just a little background while we're making this request. Last November, you're probably aware, we had a line leak on the only line coming to Pender County, New Hanover County. Luckily, it was in the wintertime. We only had about seven million gallons a day that needed to go through. But if it happened during the summertime, it could have been a very different event. Also with that, during the repair, we also discovered there's significant sedimentation in the line, and there's no repair structures to pick and clean out the line. And there's also several sections we're concerned about joint integrity and that type of thing. So we're asking you to approve this resolution for us to go to the state, asking for special appropriations to assist in this. What's estimated now by our engineers to be a fifty-four million dollar project for a forty-eight inch parallel line. Our current system has two, well, one parallel line up to the Brunswick Plant, so we're parallel part of the way. But this would parallel us all the way to New Hanover County and CFPA and that type of thing, so.
And the cost is fifty-four million dollars?
Fifty-four million is engineers estimate.
Current estimate.
Current estimate.
You mean all the help we can get?
Our last line was about thirty-seven million, but we had a lot of good factors on that. We had some pipe that was supposed to be going to another job that we picked up, that type of thing. So people were amazed that we actually had that good deal on that. So things are going up quite considerably, certainly, and a lot of other factors, and that's what we're looking at.
So if you would, for our viewers, we stream our, would you introduce yourself and?
My name is Tim Holloman. I'm the executive director with the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority. We comprise five counties. The only active county as far as water use is Pender, New Hanover, and Brunswick, and of course, the city of Wilmington.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mr. Holloman, for clarification, this ten miles of parallel pipe would run from the Brunswick Plant, and it would be instrumental in providing backup water source supply to both New Hanover County and Pender County and Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer customers down the four twenty-one corridor. Is that correct?
That is correct, and there's no way now to take down the existing line for repairs because it is the sole line, so it is crucial.
Yeah, and we've had several incidents where we've had disruption in service on that line since points. Can you talk to us a little bit about that?
The last major one was a four twenty-one relocation at the bridge and washout there, so that was a significant issue. So two lines would actually help to avoid that in the future, you have a spare line, and it also allow for additional capacity in the summertime.
And we've also had a recent event that revealed some problematic issues with the way that pipeline, can you address that?
I mentioned some of the joint integrity. That line was installed in the early nineties. There's some issue with debris and all in the trench. There's also a question about what happened to the rock base. There is no rock base anymore. It could have not been installed at the time, or over time, it could have actually sunk down in the ground. That has happened. I've seen that before. But there are some issues, and so a lot of this is in very wetlands, and if a line moves at all, it could be future problems. We're a little concerned also with the crossing under the river. That is a different type of ductile iron, restrained ductile iron pipe. But as I mentioned before, until we get a new parallel line, we really can't adequately see the problem we have in the existing.
So you're not just asking for this resolution from Pender. This is kind of a regional issue, isn't it?
We're asking all the member counties and the city of Wilmington to approve this. The Lower Cape Fear Board approved it this morning with one minor change, and I got that to you. So yes, we're asking people throughout the region. Bladen County already passed a resolution last Monday night, so that's correct. And we have been working with our legislators and representatives and senators on this issue. They're aware of it, so we've been talking to them. This is another tool in the toolbox, just to move it forward.
Thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The resolution passes unanimously? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Holloman.
Five point two, we're the Focus Broadband Great Grant Program.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Ward. I'm the Director of Business Development at Focus Broadband. I'd like to say that we just had a very wonderful and what we think would be a fruitful meeting with four county EMC and their new CEO, Don Gatton. So there's a lot of exciting things on the forefront here in Pender County. I want to talk to you today a little bit about what's called the North Carolina Great Grant Program. It's grow in rural economies with access to technology. There's three hundred and fifty million dollars budgeted for the Great Grant, and that comes all from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. To give you an idea, a typical Great Grant funding year is only fifteen million, so this is quite a bit of money available. And we'll talk about some details of how it's available to actually all one hundred counties in North Carolina. So the application window closes the fourth of April. The maximum grant size, and I will say this more than once, so keep this in mind, the maximum grant size is four million, so no matter how big the project is, the state is only going to fund four million for one project. But it also says the state was funded up to eight million per fiscal year, which means every county in North Carolina's not going to have a broadband project. They don't have issues in Mecklenburg County like we have in Pender, Columbus, Robinson, and those areas. So if there's money left over after every county does apply, there's at least one grant awarded up to four million. Then you can have a total of eight million per fiscal year. So each grant is up to four million, and there's a possibility, if there's money left over, you could have as much as eight. And any program that is, or any grant application that's not awarded through the Great Grant will be eligible for the access, for the completing access to broadband. They call it the CAVS program. To give you an idea about the CAVS program, we're not going to go into detail, but there's four hundred million dollars in that, and that's where the state works directly with the counties to identify areas and put money out for bid for doing broadband. Now, we think after we get done with this project, if we're awarded and the partnerships approved, you won't have any major issues in Pender County. We think we've identified the major areas with our Reconnect Federal Grant and our state grant. So if you're awarded a grant, just like every other state grant with Great Grants, you have two years to execute it, so it's not a long-term construction project. You have to have it done in twenty-four months. These are the speed requirements that the state requires. It's not anything that we require because our speeds are much faster. But the state requirements is you have to have a hundred megabytes by twenty. That's a minimum. But it also says by the end of twenty twenty-six, you have to have symmetrical one hundred by one hundred. We already have a gig by one gig, and we'll have two gig by two gig by the time this grant's awarded later this year. So that's not an issue in Pender County. You guys have just as fast internet as you have in Charlotte or Raleigh or anywhere else. This is the biggest difference. This is why we've never done a Great Grant in Pender County, because now tier-three counties are eligible in rural census tracts. So that was never an opportunity in Pender County before. So these are some things that the state legislators have changed to make this a little bit better program for Pender County. So partnerships, that's what I'm here tonight. Each Great Grant application is based on points. Seventy-three points is the maximum amount. When you turn in an application and yours has fifty-four points and the next person has fifty-three, the one with fifty-four is going to win. So we're going to talk a lot about points. In the partnership, you can get up to one point where the county shares infrastructure or property. We already have property on Highway fifty-three at the Utilities Department where we're putting an OLT site. So that's one point we already have with the county. Additional three points are awarded when the county uses their ARC funds for the matching part of the grant. And ARC funds are what's funding every bit of this, so the legislators want to push the counties to have a little skin in the game with the federal dollars. So that's the reason why you see ARC mentioned so much. And anytime a county is willing to fund their amount entirely from ARC funds, it also reduces the amount of matching funds that are required. Partnerships, we already have the infrastructure. We already have, hopefully, we can get a financial match from ARC, so that's four points. If you look at the number of unserved households, that's a huge number. That does not take into effect our federal reconnect program that's going to cover quite a few more than five thousand addresses. So that is a number from the state that everybody knows is probably inaccurate. But because that number's so high, we get three points for that, so we're not going to argue with the validity of that number at this point. Households that are unserved with our project, there'll be thirteen hundred and thirty-one total addresses. So there's businesses and households, but as far as total households in this project, it's thirteen hundred and thirty-one. The math there shows, based on the chart on the right, that that's worth an additional three points.
Let me stop you right there.
Yes, ma'am.
For the folks at home and folks that are listening to this, there was a grant awarded, a federal grant, back in twenty twenty, and I would just like for you to reiterate that what we're talking about now with the matching grants from the county's ARC funding
Yes, ma'am.
is to provide state funding. This is a state grant to provide state funding for the underserved areas. The first federal grant a couple of years ago was for unserved.
It's basically the same difference, Ms. Jackie.
Yeah.
But this is from this.
We still have pockets of people. That's where the one thousand three hundred and thirty-one households. Those are the ones that would be left unserved from the initial.
Those are actually the ones like we had talked about years ago that were in the disputed areas.
Yes.
And because they're judged by census tracts and not individual addresses, and because you guys have a digital inclusion plan, and you helped identify that with the survey, so the county did the work to help identify those that previously the federal government would not awarded. So this is a state Great Grant program. It's administered by the state of North Carolina. It is using federal ARPA funds, but it's administered through the state, completely separate from the USDA reconnect grant that we have.
And what this means for Pender is this is going to get that last little lick of disputed coverage for folks that may live at the end of a road that can't be served because some other provider is in the area.
Yes, ma'am. As far as what's on the ground at the time of this application, this pretty much solves those issues.
Good. Thank you.
There will be pockets, one or two here and there. Somebody will build a mile or two off the road. Those will always come to play, but this takes care of the majority of the problems in Pender County.
But we can get to them.
Oh, yeah. Well, when you have fiber ubiquitous like we have after our projects are done, then that's not an issue. We're not talking millions of dollars in. So the points go along with the households. The points also go along with the businesses. We identified thirty-four businesses in the area, so we get the maximum points there. We get almost the maximum points for cost per household. That thirty-eight hundred dollars per address is in the grant. That does not include the cost to construct fiber from the side of the road to the house. It does not include the electronics. It does not include the installation. We take care of all that cost at the time the customer calls us. Then there's a base speed multiplier. We blow that out of the park. The state says you have to have a hundred by a hundred to get the maximum points, and we have a gig by a gig, and we'll have two gig when this project is completed. Address points, you folks already approved this back in November, so we already have the additional points for the community broadband playbook. The county can match up to fifty percent of the required match, and once again, you cannot exceed four million dollars from the state. So you can have a fifty million dollar application. The state's only going to give you four million dollars. So keep that four million dollars in mind. Scoring summary, I mentioned earlier, seventy-three points is the maximum amount. We're going to be closer to sixty-four points when all is said and done. And a lot of those are multipliers of three, or two, or one, based on all those criteria I told you. So what the state looks at is if Pender County has two applications, one's a sixty-four point and one's less than sixty-four, they're going to award the one with the most points. And this is the way the Great Grant program was set up by legislation, not by any, anything else. And if you have a question, stop, stop and ask me. This is our existing, the two sides of the kidneys, we like to call it. You've got the I forty corridor that goes straight through the middle of the county. All of those dots, and I'm colorblind, but I think they're blue, in the middle there, those are the thirteen hundred and thirty-one addresses that have, are applicable to this grant. So you see them across the county, but you already know you've got service up and down the seventeen corridor. It's the middle areas around the northern burglar and a little bit of the south area burglar down around Montague off of four twenty-one. Those are areas that are identified. So I've got one more slide, but it's, oh, all right. So there's the total, a hundred and ten miles, five thousand, or excuse me, five million ninety-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Total number of households is twelve ninety-seven. The total number of businesses is thirty-four. That's where we get thirteen thirty-one. So the county's potential possible mass, match, if you use ARC funds, is five hundred and forty-seven thousand with the partnership. And here's the way I like to look at that. That's what you can put up to. But if you put up to five hundred and forty-seven thousand, that means we won the grant, because you don't pay anything unless we win the grant. So if we win this grant, which is five million, you add that to the other thirty-two million that we're bringing to the county, it's thirty-seven million dollars for a return of five hundred and forty-seven thousand. So this is a compliment to the federal reconnect that we hope will completely serve and take care of all those unserved areas of Pender County.
Yeah, I don't think you have to sell this to us. This is more than worth the money that the county would have to, to match.
But if you see my boss, make sure you tell him I sold, I sold it to you.
Well, I appreciate it.
I'll tell, I'll tell your boss you look like Santa Claus to me.
I appreciate you coming and explaining this in the detail that you did.
Yes.
I think you've done a very nice job, and I appreciate you coming and helping the citizens of Pender County. This is something that is needed and has been identified in the past, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to get this issue resolved and be able to serve across the county with this, with this service, so.
To give you an idea of how unusual it is, with basically two swings of the bat, we can solve the issue in Pender County. We've been working on it in Columbus County, which is a lot smaller, a lot less population since two thousand and eleven, but you can only apply for grants when they come around. So this is a windfall for Pender County for the dominoes to stack up.
And then, and then the other thing that you mentioned was, for whatever reason, and we've been disputing this for years and years and years, we're identified as tier-three county.
Yeah.
Which means we're identified as one of the twenty richest counties in the state of North Carolina.
Yeah.
Which is not true, so, but this allowed us to be able to apply and be considered.
Yeah.
And that's very, very fortunate on our, our.
Those rural census blocks are what makes the difference, because Pender, just like Brunswick, is the tale of two counties, seventeen east and seventeen west. But once you get that tier three, it affects everything else you're eligible for.
Before you leave the podium, I'd like to take in a post upon you, just very briefly, to tell the folks at home where we're at, fiber on the ground, where we're at with laying, and where we're at with the prior grant.
Right, so with the federal reconnect, we're working in the cane tuck area. We have eight different OLT sites that are identified.
What are OLT?
Fiber, a fiber switch, basically. I'm glad Ms. Jackie's here, because she keeps me on my toes. The fiber switches that serve that area, there's eight of those fiber switches throughout Pender County. They're identified by the community that they're in, so we're in cane tuck, working on a cane tuck OLT. We also have been in negotiation with three additional contractors, three different companies from Moztec, to bring in additional contractors, and what we're going to do is connect all eight of the OLT sites around the whole county project, so as we're connecting, we can connect any single customer in any single area and have multiple crews. Of course, that will depend on DOT encroachment permits and those things, which we've gotten a little bit better at getting those back. So now it's just a matter of getting the boots on the ground and the equipment, you know, ready to be installed. But we are working actively in cane tuck and adding more contractors.
And we're well aware of your constraints and your concern about those constraints and your willingness to bring on more work crews
Yes, ma'am.
once those constraints are alleviated. So anything we can do to help you?
We will definitely reach out. I want to say Chad and Doug and everybody here at Pender County has been excellent to work with. It's been really a team effort since we came over here three years ago.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, we're going to move on to section six.
Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry. The manager has suggested it might be appropriate, the board is inclined, to go ahead and give approval for this funding so that they know that it's there. Then Meg can bring the budget amendment back at our next meeting to do that, to actually move the funds. And so, and the amount of five forty-seven, six seventy-five. And again, the board could either amend the agenda for that, or just, since this is on there and that was a request, give the approval, because the money will not be moved until Meg comes back with the budget.
Can we just do it just prior to the next item? When we get ready to do that with Meg?
Well, can we go ahead and do it while we have our speaker here?
I think that's what, I think that's what the manager was suggesting, is that way he would know that you had supported it with the money.
And since this directly impacts my district, I'd like to make a motion at this time, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve.
You've got to make a motion to amend the agenda first.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to allow approval of the matching funds necessary as requested under the Great Grant program.
I'll say it there.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
And at this time, I'd like to further make the motion that this board approve the funding of five hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars in ARC funding that is currently available to us in the event that we, Pender County, are awarded the benefit of four million dollars in proceeds under the Great Grant Fund.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
So I'm going to get on my high horse here, because we, we, we have made a concerted effort to, and I'm talking to department eds and I'm talking to our staff. We've got to quit adding and removing items at every meeting. This makes us look like we don't know what we're doing. We got to get things, we got to think further than the next meeting. So get things on the right agenda and get the things that are on the agenda done, so we don't have to remove something, so that we don't have to add something every meeting.
It takes a lot of time doing that.
Well, not only that, it makes us look like we're not properly prepared, and it's ridiculous. It really is.
And we're not giving proper notice to the public on issues that are going to be decided.
And that was the very reason this was designed this way in the first place, was to give proper notice to the public and be transparent of what we're doing as far as conducting business. So I would like to see us improve on that, too.
Yeah, so we've, we're, we're starting to have agenda review meetings a week before our meeting. And oftentimes, there's not materials there to even review for the items that are identified to be on the agenda. Let's, let's clean it up. Let's get this thing so that we look professional and that we look prepared and we're moving forth and we're using efficient amounts of time in a meeting, in a business meeting, okay?
I agree. I would like to add, though, that, that folks notice, hopefully folks notice that we had to vote to add it to the agenda, but if a vote to add something like this is not unanimous, it cannot be added. Because I'd like to reiterate, Mr. Brown and I go way back, and a lot of things would get added with no notice that were already decided before the meeting. This is a long time ago, guys.
We heard about that.
But it'd be something that would wind up being a three to two vote or something like that. Nobody knew what hit him until it was too late. So I will say I'm glad that this board cannot add something unless it's unanimous, and that pretty much means if it's unanimous, it's a no-brainer. But to your point, wait another meeting, unless it is absolutely time-sensitive and cannot be done. I mean, I just, yeah, it's a pretty long laundry list of stuff getting added here, and I agree with you.
Yep. All right. Let's move on to section six, item six point one, the twenty twenty-two, twenty thirty-two Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Ms. Turner?
Good afternoon. We're actually going to tag-team this presentation, and we also have two staff members from McGill Associates, which is our consultant on the phone, Jim Ford and Luanne Brown. There's third. Mike's on there, Mike Norris as well, okay. And we have a PowerPoint presentation, and Vanessa Lancer with Planning is going to do that, and hopefully that'll answer a lot of your questions before we even get started.
Well, good afternoon. We also have Zach White from Parks and Recreation and Travis Henley from Planning, so I think between this team, we've got answers for you if you have questions. So, uh, I'm delighted to be able to present this, uh, draft of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update this afternoon. A lot of hard work went into this plan and not just by staff and our consultants, but also by citizens of Pender County. Um, so thank you to everybody who took the time to fill out a survey or attend one of the public input meetings, um, or participate in a focus group or an interview. We appreciate you. Um, and it was certainly a team effort. So just as a refresher, uh, our current plan was adopted in twenty-ten. It did have a ten-year lifespan and it's now due for an update. Um, the goals of this update, or the plan that we are proposing, uh, for twenty-twenty-two, is to maintain compliance with funder rec- uh, recommendations or requirements, rather. And also become compliant with the twenty-eighteen Pender two-point-oh comprehensive plan. Uh, the plan that we are proposing does both of those things. Uh, the second goal is, of course, to guide county parks and recreation in a strategic and feasible way, uh, for the next ten years in the areas of facilities, um, amenities and programs, paying attention to acquisition and development, management and maintenance, funding, and the equitable allocation of resources throughout the county. So this process began in July of last year and we are currently in the public comment period of plan development. Um, the plan is available on our website, pendercountync.gov. You can find a copy of the draft plan there. You can also find an opportunity to provide comments online and, uh, information for providing comments, uh, by email, over the phone and in person. Uh, that public comment period will close on March twenty-third, after which we will incorporate comments received into a final plan in late March. And then we will be back, uh, before this board in April, um, with a request for adoption. So here you see on the left, uh, the cover of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-thirty-two, uh, comprehensive plan. And on the right is the table of contents. We've broken the plan into four sections. Uh, the first section is a little bit of history of the county and then some trends and projections for the future. The section number two is where we've completed a Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. So this includes all of the needs we heard from the community, um, as well as state and national findings for Parks and Recreation. And we also did a staff, uh, assessment and provided some recommendations in section two. Section three includes the Parks and Recreation Inventory and Assessment. So here is where we looked at every park in the county, um, the shape of the facilities, uh, the amenities, as well as our programs that we offer. Um, did an assessment and provided some recommendations. And finally, section four, the Recommendations and Action Plan, took into consideration public input, um, the current state of our assets, as well as state and national best practices, uh, and we've created goals for the next ten years, um, objectives for those goals. And then a concrete action plan with steps to achieve those goals. So I'll just run through each of these sections very briefly. Uh, section one, I've pulled out a couple of statistics. First, it's the North Carolina Office of State Budget Management Projection for twenty-thirty, uh, which is that one in five North Carolinians will be sixty-five years or older at that time. So this is an important, uh, piece of information as we look to the future, the next ten years, the programming, the types of programming we'll offer. Additionally, the types of facilities we may wish to consider with modifications to, um, provide increased mobility, that kind of thing. Uh, the other statistic, again, according to the North Carolina Office of State Budget Management, is that in twenty-thirty, we will see an increase in population here in Pender County by almost twenty percent. So that is about twelve thousand additional people. And as you'll see as we go through this, uh, many of the benchmarks created nationally have to do with population. So as the population increases, so do the recommended, uh, facilities and programming. In section two, we did this pretty robust, uh, needs assessment, including a great deal of community and stakeholder input. Uh, we did four steering committee meetings, uh, we had a community survey, we did eight public meetings. Those were all in person at eight different neighborhood sites in Pender County. This was a, a very large undertaking. And this is where we really brought the plan to the people, to their neighborhoods and asked, what do you need right here in your neighborhood? Uh, we performed ten stakeholder interviews. Uh, the intention of these interviews was to speak with our current partners and people directly involved in the provision of services and the maintenance of our facilities, understand those partnerships, um, and identify ways we can better those partnerships, strategically move forward. Um, and then finally, five focus group interviews were conducted. The focus groups, uh, were designed to address populations, uh, that may not have been represented by these other input, uh, methods. Um, and we created groups, uh, with representatives from various populations. Uh, for instance, one group was called Future Opportunities and it included folks from, uh, under or unserved communities or population groups. So members of that group included folks from Maple Hill as well as the Hispanic community. So this took about ten months to do. We started in April of last year and we were able to speak with eight hundred and seventy-eight, um, Pender County folks. So here are some results from all of that public input. Um, again, it's a great deal of data and it can answer a variety of questions. Here we're just looking at the top parks facility needs and the top program needs. Um, in the first group of boxes, um, you'll see in blue, uh, things that we saw in each of these modes that made the top three lists. So the survey, public meetings and our focus groups all told us, we want walking, jogging, hiking trails. That's what's needed in Pender County. When we spoke with our stakeholders, again, these are our current partners, so we're really looking at more of a behind-the-scenes perspective in these interviews. Um, for top facility needs, they said that, uh, increased facility maintenance staff and increased safety at facilities were most important. Uh, when we look at the top three programming needs for Pender County Parks and Rec, we see that for our survey and public meetings, uh, both groups identified outdoor concerts. Um, as a need moving forward, it is something that's currently offered, um, but that people want to see continue. Uh, our focus groups had some deeper discussions about programming in general. So just an increase, uh, was needed there in the focus groups, uh, specifically through partnerships and for, um, targeted groups, uh, such as older adults and kids with disabilities. And finally, in the stakeholder interviews, uh, the top program need that we found was just an increase in programming staff to run those programs. So when we looked at our staffing in section two, um, we first calculated the number of current staff. And the number on the far left, you'll see twenty-two F T E. And if you're not familiar with that term, that means, um, full-time equivalent. So that takes into account seasonal employees and part-time employees and, so that we can compare apples to apples. Um, so we currently have twenty-two full-time equivalent staff members. Uh, the center figure, thirty-point-seven full-time equivalent, is the minimum number that is recommended by the National Recreation and Parks Association. And that breaks down to five-point-one full-time equivalent staff per ten thousand residents. So if we compare those two numbers, we see, uh, on the bottom left, uh, a deficit of eight-point-seven full-time equivalent staff members by that measure. Um, the third, uh, figure on the top, fifty-four-point-two F T E. This is the national median for full-time staff equivalent, which breaks down to nine per ten thousand residents. This is arrived at, uh, through an examination of Parks and Recreation Agencies nationally. So this is a comparison with other agencies. So if we compare our twenty-two to this number, we see a deficit of thirty-two-point-two F T E, again, compared to that national median. In section three, we looked at, uh, Parks and Recreation and did an inventory assessment and provided recommendations. Uh, these are the seven parks, uh, that are owned or operated by Pender County. Holly Shelter Shooting Range is the only park that is not, the land is not owned by Pender County. It's, the program is just operated by Pender County. Um, and in this part of the assessment, we looked at all of those parks, um, through the lens of acreage and compared them with the, uh, best practices, uh, provided by the National Recreation and Parks Association. Uh, the top part of the graph, you'll see all of our, uh, park land, uh, the type of park, uh, that, that is classified. And then the total acreage of a hundred and thirty-six-point-five acres. Uh, the lower graph is a comparison with that benchmark number by the N R P A. Um, and if you see on the right, uh, in red, we've shown to be deficient in every type of park except for a community park. Uh, and we have a surplus of three-point-three acres, um, when compared with that national benchmark. These are the recommendations for new parks.
So let me, let me ask a question.
Sure.
At this point. So can you get back a slide, please? That national comparison, and does that take into account, um, Yellowstone National Park and all those other parks that have vast amounts of land? Well over what the residents are in that county or that, over that state?
That's a good, yeah, that's a, that's a great question.
I mean, add those few those numbers to something that most are not able to.
Absolutely. And I would direct that question to our consultants who are on the phone with us, um, to speak to that national, uh, average or that national benchmark, if they have some input on that.
Sure. Vanessa, hi everybody. This is Jim Ford with McGill Associates. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to explain this. So typically what you're looking at, when you look at benchmarking from the N R P A, that includes the, uh, different park acreages per population. You're looking at similar communities or types of communities, so looking at counties of similar population. And it's mostly local government, not federal, uh, as was discussed a moment ago. Does that explain that?
Yeah, the, the top one says, I believe N P S stands for National Park Service. Or is that not correct?
Right. No, you're absolutely right. Both the National Park Service and state agencies are taking tabs on, uh, parks that, in general, and offer these numbers as resources for planning of, of all local government. Yeah, and again, notice that the N P S is just for regional parks. They don't, uh, offer recommendations on district communities. They don't have many.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Williams has a question?
I, I want to make sure I'm clear. Um, so is this counties only or cities only? Is this counties?
Right. So it's locals, so it would include both county and, um, local municipality.
Okay, that, that's.
It would include equal parts.
Okay. Gotcha. Alright.
Any other questions?
I take that into account, but that's just not as bad as.
Yeah, I mean, but it does look like we're not.
Exactly.
Making much progress here. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so here are the recommendations for future parks to fill some of that gap. Uh, two new district parks, uh, one here on, uh, one-seventeen North, uh, and then here, one in Scottsville. Three new community parks, the first in the Columbia Township Community, um, the second in the Cane Tuck Community, and the third in the Long Creek Community, and one new neighborhood park, which is proposed to be located in Maple Hill. Finally, in section four, we've identified, uh, the following goals: increased organizational capacity and efficiency, increased funding opportunities, maintain and improve programming and service delivery, and maintain, improve and expand facilities and amenities. And on the right is just an example of the chart included in section four with the goal at the top. Uh, objective one-point-one for goal one, increased organizational capacity and efficiency, is to ensure adequate staffing for administration, maintenance and programming to meet demand and ensure service quality. And the concrete action item below that is to hire and train staff for current and future administrative, uh, maintenance and programming needs. In some cases, we're able to give capital cost estimates, um, impact on the operations budget and the timeframe to complete. Uh, in this example, uh, this would be an ongoing action, um, and the budget, uh, impact is unknown at this time, but it would not create a capital cost. So next steps for this plan, uh, as I mentioned, we are currently in the public comment period through March twenty-third. We are actively seeking comments, uh, if the public has some, and of course, from this board, seeking input. On, uh, February twenty-eighth, we did present this plan to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Um, they recommended approval. On March first, we held a public hearing and presented this plan, uh, to the planning board. They also recommended approval. Um, and obviously, we're here this afternoon to review the plan with this board. And on April fourth, we'll be back, uh, with a public hearing and a staff request for adoption. And I'm happy to answer any other questions or our, our team can step up as well.
Do we have any questions?
I know that it, this has been the most thorough, um, step that Parks and Recs we've seen. Appreciate the work and staff's done from multiple departments working together, not everybody working in silos, right, Mr. Shipley?
That's correct.
I'm gonna throw that in every chance I get.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Alright.
And I'd like to make the comment that I appreciate the staff and the process of including the public at large, giving the public an opportunity to speak and let the county know, uh, where to push these efforts. Um, and how the money is to be spent. So that was, that was very.
What's kind of strange, I believe one news organization said we had committed to twenty-eight or twenty-nine million dollars already or something like that. Anybody hear about that one? That was, don't get it right, just get it out there, right? So that was, that was interesting.
Well, I, I can say this, uh, you know, I've been on the board about seven and a half years now. Um, and, you know, prior to that, I, I served on the Parks and Rec Board as, as a citizen. And we've, we've made a concerted effort to change our strategy from investing in programs to investing in assets and development of properties that we acquire. Um, and purposely trying to, uh, provide the types of, of programs and services that, um, our citizens are asking for. So this is very key to being able to develop a successful plan where the public should be able to easily recognize and see the progress that has been made. I mean, for years and years and years, we, we, we didn't have very many facilities at all to offer. And now we have various parks at different stages of development. And, uh, and I, I believe that this board is gonna continue, um, with that effort going forward, even after I'm not here. Um, so I wanna thank everybody for, um, listening to the public, as Commissioner Newton said. Um, and, and trying to, um, develop and implement those, uh, Parks and Rec services that the public would like to utilize. And I, I think that we, we've done a good job with that. We need to continue with this progress. So thank you very much for the update.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Alright, uh, we're at section seven, public comment. Um.
Thank you to McGill. Appreciate it. Let them know they can go.
Mr. Turner?
Ms. Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, Donald Sullivan.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan?
Good afternoon, Donald Sullivan. I reside in Edkinson. Um, I'm not here to talk about property tax. But I've been advised in the media, as you just brought up, Mr. Williams, uh, about some new construction projects we have on tap. Specifically, at least, the library in Hampstead, the new law enforcement center here in Bergoff. And I'd just like to suggest, and I've already talked to Alan about this, suggest that we consider tabling any of this new construction contracting until the economy stabilizes, we don't get trapped in this inflationary process that's going on right now for whatever reason. I don't think investing in construction that we don't need desperately right now would be good judgment. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your comments. Appreciate your comments.
Point well taken.
Thank you.
That was your only sign, Ms. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda, section eight. Everybody's had a chance to review all the items, even the items that we removed. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Ms. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Consent agenda is approved, or consent, items are approved. We're going to move on to section nine, nine point one. Resolution approving contract for mowing the Pender County Commerce Park roadsides and expanded shoulder area. Mr. Van?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. Pender County did solicit bids for mowing of the Pender Commerce Park roadsides and the expanded shoulder areas. This request for proposal ran from, as far as the advertisement, from February seventh to February twenty-fifth. And the bids were opened on February twenty-fifth. This RFP requires a service contract period of seven months, beginning Monday, April fourth of this year, and ending on Friday, November fourth of two thousand and twenty-two. We do have an increased number of cut times for the contract period from fourteen to sixteen in an effort to further enhance the Pender Commerce Park overall appearance. The, you see the bids, should see those on your summary sheet. Intercoastal Land Maintenance at twelve thousand eight hundred dollars is the contractor that we would like to recommend to be awarded. They have serviced the park for three years now, have done a tremendous job as far as getting, getting things in order. It really looks great compared to the past, and during that three-year period, they have not increased their price either. So it is our recommendation, if the board would choose to award this contract for twelve thousand eight hundred dollars to Intercoastal Land Maintenance.
And this is for the period of one year?
Yes, sir, for basically seven months.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. McCoy.
The cutting edge belongs here. They didn't follow through on their bid?
So the concern was, if that's realistic, can they, can they really do it for that? Particularly with the way gas prices have increased and so forth. Also, we did look at references, and obviously, we also have our own point of reference with this particular contractor that we've been using for the last three years as well. But in terms of commercial accounts, the contractor that we're using is certainly more suited, more capable of handling the job, we think, than cutting edge.
But due consideration was given to each of the
Yes, sir.
entities that submitted a bid, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thi- this is mowing grass. This is a problem that I see over and over and over again. There is a reason that we submit contracts for bids. We are stewards of the taxpayers' dollar. We don't need to consider or second guess what a businessman says he can perform a contract for by whether or not his competitors say it's more likely than not he can do it for that. If you want to do business and choose people that you've done business with in the past, just go ahead and choose them and quit doing this farce of a dance of putting things out for bid and using a committee to evaluate in points and come up with the second or third highest bid for contract, because that is not the intent of the process. I've said it before, I'll say it again, I will keep saying it till I'm blue in the face, and that will not be pretty.
So the bids, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, never mind.
Probably going to explain it.
I was just going to say the, the bids do range in price from thirty-six thousand dollars to six thousand four hundred dollars among the four different contractors. Intercoastal Land Maintenance has done it for the last three years for ten thousand five hundred dollars. And again, I think part of being, I, I don't say this disrespectfully at all, but I think part of the consideration was as part of the being good stewards with the taxpayers' dollars is that we're getting a great value for the money that we're spending as well. And I will tell you that things were looking pretty shabby over here, and this particular contractor has just done a tremendous job, and he's very, he's been very attentive to our needs when we have expressed things that need to be improved. Particularly, there's been a problem with litter as well. He's been, he's done a tremendous job with making sure to pick the litter up before they mow the grass.
Yep.
Those sort of things.
So, you know, I, I, I got to say I appreciate going through the process. I think the process has to include other considerations besides just price. Reliability is a big factor. Somebody getting done what our expectations are, what we have scoped out in contracts. Those all are things on time and, and without change orders. And so there, to me, I, I just want to say, I think, I appreciate going through this methodology. I think we've used this methodology across the board. And the only exception that we've given or requested, for the most part, is that we use local people wherever possible. So.
I will say this, the particular contractor we're using is more local than the other one. He's, of course, he's not in Pender County, he's in Wilmington. And the, the lowest contractor that Ms. Newton was referring to, they're about an hour and five minutes away, so.
You realize, sometimes you gotta look at their track record. You don't want to get someone out there that's not going to be able to do the job. So there's a lot of things you gotta consider. If, the, I would love, would love to have the lowest bid sometime, you gotta realize, look at the whole picture, like. I'm sweating that.
And I, I get all of this. And I'm not agreeing with Ms. Newton, and I'm not disagreeing with you guys. But sixty-four hundred dollars is half the price. So I gotta wonder, when you're awarding these points or you're taking a look, you're going through the criteria, are you allowed to reach out to these folks and talk to them? I mean, this guy, whoever cutting edge is, how does he come up with a number so low compared to the rest of them? I mean, you have to wonder how that's the case.
I mean, you got a bid thirty-six thousand, twenty-four thousand, twelve thousand eight hundred, and then sixty-four hundred dollars. You know, a lot of times in the bid process, if you got five bids, you'll have, you throw the lowest and the highest out, and then you start working on the three. I mean, there's a lot of stuff, because you, you figure both of them, usually, they're being left field. They hadn't done their homework, don't really understand what they're bidding. And like, to your point, people hate change orders. I remember what it was like before we started using these folks. I got complaints all the time, as y'all didn't get, probably, because you know who was calling me, trust me.
Well, well, let me say this too. You know, if somebody fails, then we have to go back through the process, and that can be detrimental too, depending on what the PO or the contract's for. This is just one example of cutting grass. But overall, the process that we've been utilizing, where we're going out, we're, we're asking for bids, we're evaluating those bids, and then you guys are bringing back a recommendation based on criteria. And we're stressing that we need to try to use local businesses wherever possible. I, I, I mean, is it a hundred percent perfect? Maybe not. But I think it's a lot better than, than it has been, and, and we can continue to tweak it. So, anyway, are there any other comments or questions?
One other question. Have we ever used cutting edge?
No, sir.
There's no history there with them?
All right. At this time, do we have a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? What were you in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
I had my say. I got my pound of flesh.
Okay. Unanimous.
Mr. Van, it just raises my, my level of awareness and attention when I hear, "We've used them in the past and we like them." You know, I, I just, I, I just don't like anything that smacks of cronyism, so I, I'm sure that you didn't need that this time.
For that, I, I just simply wanted to express what a tremendous job has been done as far as the change that we've experienced.
Well, I'm sorry for my overreacting, but that was, that was where that came from. I, I just don't want us to be perceived as a good old boy.
Yeah, and we don't, I don't think any of us want to follow that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to clear, I, I, my, my comments weren't about criticism. It was because I know in the past, we have seen vendors or folks, contractors, that we were not happy with the job, and we, and the way, as far as I was concerned, I didn't ever want to use them again. So there's a reason I was asking the questions.
Sure, absolutely. I certainly appreciate that.
All right. We're going to move on to nine point two. Resolution approving contract for geotechnical engineering services for the new Pender County Jail. Mr. Van?
Yes, sir. So we did advertise an RFQ, request for qualifications for geotechnical engineering services for the new jail and law enforcement center. That ran from February eighth until February twenty-fifth, at which point we received the responses. We did waive the Mini Brooks Act, and therefore also requested a proposal for pricing of the services as outlined in the RFQ. We had two firms that responded. ECS in the amount of ten thousand three hundred dollars, SNME in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. And looking, as far as assessing the proposals, it was apples to apples as far as both of these particular contractors are concerned, or engineering firms. And so we are asking for the board to approve ECS as the engineering service firm to perform those services.
And so in this case, they're, they are the lowest bid?
Yes, sir.
And so.
But I will also tell you that we've used both of these firms, and we've had great success with both, but certainly with ECS, we've, we've never had any issues at all.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Van or comments? Can we consider a motion?
Motion for approval.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion.
Mr. McCoy's motion and second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to item nine point three, approval of purchase order to Fairway Ford to, to purchase a transit van in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars. Mr. Cutler, Sheriff Cutler, excuse me. Good to see you, Sheriff.
Good to see you. Thank you. This is for the purchase of a vehicle right here in the county at Fairway Ford. These, this is not budgeted money. This is state funds from Senate Bill one oh five, awarded to sheriff's offices in counties of two hundred, of less than two hundred and ten thousand people. This is not budgeted funds.
But it, but we do have the price covered.
Yes, sir.
And the need there.
Yep, yep.
I have a question. Uh, they can't get a two thousand twenty-two, I mean, two thousand twenty-three is next year, ain't it?
Yes, so that's what was available. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep, we definitely got, got what was available.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to nine point four. Offer on three surplus lots located on River Bend. Ms. Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is circling back to the three properties on River Bend. The bid has been offered for twenty-eight thousand dollars. The attachment that was on the agenda gave a breakdown of the lots that you had asked for in the previous meeting.
Okay.
If you have any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from the other board members?
You know, floods aren't near. I mean, it's a flood zone, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Was I looking at the, the values compared to the twenty-eight thousands being quite a bit of difference?
As far as the tax value, and he gave, there's, he gave a breakdown of why. Because of the encroachment of the house. He gave a current tax value, a low side and a high side.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's, it's unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Still see a span of value there, but.
Yeah, if you look at the high side, yeah, yeah.
Understand, understand. So the, the motion carries. Unanimously.
He was just half-hearted, I believe, but it was, it was a vote.
It's such a wild card. I guess its values, eye to beholder, if you buy a place and you know it's going to flood.
Well, the way it was divided.
Yeah, in a way, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not hurting. He's not going to hurt with it.
So you're not allowed to build back in there. I mean, if you've got a building, you can.
They can build back in there.
But you can't build, you can't build in there, can you?
Yeah.
Way, way, way up.
And you can't get to it.
All right.
Good luck.
We're going to move on to item nine point five, recommendation to award internet service contract to Spectrum for thirty-six months. Mr. Moore?
Good afternoon, members of, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sorry about that. Today, we are making the recommendation to award the internet services contract to Spectrum and for thirty-six months, the wide area network, nine-one-one backup center, Hampstead Convenience Center, contract AT&amp;T for thirty-six months. And I've got a very short PowerPoint presentation. So just some highlights, the total and estimated annual cost for these services is seventy-four thousand three hundred and sixty. The annual savings estimated is sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. A percentage of the primary internet, the, I'll get to what a WAN is too, by the way. Hub location and all the Hampstead library and WAN services are E-rate reimbursable. We'll talk about E-rate here shortly. The, when we, we did put this out to RFP, Spectrum came in the lowest for internet, except for the Hampstead Convenience Center. The Hampstead Convenience Center was actually cheaper with AT&amp;T, which is why we're awarding it to them.
So let me stop you there. We use cards to, for people to be able to pay. There are credit cards?
Yes, sir.
Correct?
I believe so.
And sometimes there's a difficulty around speed?
This is going to fix that.
Some, some of you know I've been doing some moving, and I happened to go three or four times in the last two weeks, and I didn't experience that, but I've heard people say that. I guess I'm, you know, it was, it worked again.
Right.
But I've gotten the same.
So did we factor that into the consideration here?
The great thing is, is this, this is going to be fiber internet, so that should not be an issue. We're trying to put.
That issue will go away, is what you're saying.
We're trying our best to put faster internet out there, because it is slow. It's noticeably slow. We're also putting cameras out there, or, or cloud-based video cameras out there as well, so it'll support that as well as a cloud-based or access control.
Well, great. We're addressing customer comments, and I'm very happy that we were able to resolve those issues. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good question. So AT&amp;T was the lowest for wide area network. Again, we'll talk about that here shortly. They had the highest score, and you can see there what the, the estimated monthly cost is for thirty-six months. We, again, we are recommending the Hampstead Convenience Center and the nine-one-one backup center internet to AT&amp;T as well as the wide area network. Okay? So E-rate, I've, I've actually got Alan here too. He is the resident E-rate expert. And I'm just going to try to go with this. So, E-rate's a federal grant program that provides matching funds to public schools or libraries. Internet services and related equipment. Um, internet services and related equipment are eligible. The related equipment is usually like network switches and things that get you to that point for internet. Pender is eligible for eighty percent in matching funds. Um, a portion of the primary internet connection, um, a portion of the hub location and all of the Hampstead, Hampstead Library WAN connection is eligible. Uh, and we are estimated to get ten thousand nine, nine hundred and eighty dollars annually ineligible for these eligible, can't talk, for these eligible sites, sorry. Any questions so far?
So, um, what does, is that part of the savings that we're gonna see? Is that part of that sixteen?
So, it's actually not. You'll see, you'll see those savings compared to what we're currently spending plus the estimated E-rate funds.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. I wanted to keep them separate so you could actually see the difference.
Okay.
So, I wanted to go over what the comparison is for internet services and what wide area network is. Um, just very briefly, the way, whoops, wrong pointer. So, basically, take for example, the DSS building. The DSS building goes to the data center out to the internet connection, well, through our data center to get its internet, right? And also, I just gave two examples, Bergoff Library and County Library, or, excuse me, the DSS building. Whereas with a wide area network, um, what that is, is basically interconnect your, your sites that are distance, right? So, right now, we, we have fiber between buildings in Bergoff for the most part. And then you have your Hampstead Library and Hampstead Annex, for example, they use a leased fiber type situation, which is wide area network. That's the difference. I did want to explain that, um, so that you guys knew. And, um, I did have a few graphs here just to show the comparison, the numbers that came back. As you can see, we, this was the internet services. The great thing about internet services is that you can kind of pick and choose. So, we tried to do what was best, um, for the county, um, in our decision here.
Does that mean that we didn't always pick the Cadillac one?
Not saying that, I'm just, uh, in, in this go-around, we actually did the RP and everything. We, um, those two sites that I mentioned, one of them being the, uh, Hampstead Convenience Center, that one was gonna be more money with, uh, Spectrum, so that's why we chose AT&T. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just saying that, um, what I've seen in the past is sometimes we pick the Cadillac when we really only need a Chevrolet or a Ford.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And, uh, so, I wanna make sure that we're not paying for more than we're actually gonna utilize.
Yes, sir, I agree. So, just the cost comparison of the wide area network, um, overall, it was actually cheaper, um, with AT&T. And, uh, I just had a little slide in here about the current calls versus the, the new calls. Show the call savings there monthly. And do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Very good presentation, by the way.
Thank you very much.
That good presentation eliminates a lot of questions.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
So, I guess you need us to consider a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous? The motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
We're gonna move on to item nine point six. Emergency management facility purchase order for generators. Mr. Batson?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Before you, in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two capital budget for facilities was a hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cent. This will replace two portable shelter generators purchased after Hurricane Friend. Pender County Emergency Management requested a straight to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the state budget in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two year. This will replace two additional portable generators purchased after Hurricane Friend. These purchases, or this purchase order is for three hundred KVA generators, one two hundred KDVA generator. It replaces four of the six generators primarily used for shelter operations during storms. In additional, in addition, these generators are portable and if need so, to support critical sites, county facilities, disaster response, lift stations, pump stations, and any other emergency service station if needed. These generators will be purchased from National Power out of Raleigh under the North Carolina Sheriff Association contract. These generators are expected to be delivered in twenty-four to twenty-eight months. And currently, we plan on releasing four of the oldest generators to the asset manager for surplus.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Batson?
Been a while coming. I know soon.
So, it's gonna be over twenty-four months getting the new generator?
Correct. At the present time, I will make a phone call if this is approved when we leave and to get the process started. So, we hope to have them right at the peak of hurricane season, twenty-four to twenty-eight months.
Okay, so how about the existing generators? Are they gonna be okay till then?
They're still usable and they understand they're over twenty years old. So, in any flip of a switch or any bump, they could go away, but we're.
Well, we're not getting rid of any of those until we get the new ones.
Correct. Once we receive these four, they will be put in service and then we're gonna turn over to the asset manager for state surplus.
That's, I'm good.
Just for the record, you guys test these things, I mean.
They are tested on them, tested with a service agreement and they're tested yearly and load-tested. Yes, sir.
We've almost gotten money out of the ones we got.
Correct. And with the addition of these, we'll have five generators in the county. They're all the make, same type, they'll just be a different size. So, we're trying to transition into all the same type of generators, so we can use the same filter, same oil, everything's universal. You what? And we've worked with facilities on this project since the fall of last year and got it all done.
Great, great. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. While you're here with other members of your support team, I want to take the opportunity to thank and acknowledge the excellent work, uh, and assistance that was given by Pender EMS, the union crew earlier this week. And in, in particular, I want to thank paramedic Holly Bauer and EMT Lynn Newkirk for the wonderful response and the excellent professional service they rendered to a family member last week. Much appreciated and I felt the need to acknowledge that. Did a tremendous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newkirk.
All right. We're ready for a motion?
Motion approval?
Second.
We have two motions and one second.
It's all right. It doesn't matter as long as, as long as we get the generators.
All in favor?
Well, generators.
All in favor? Everybody, everybody's for this one, Tom. Thank you.
Roll the tape.
Very good. All right, we're gonna move on to, um, item ten.
We have the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I forgot about, thank you, Ms. Klein. So, nine point seven is the resolution supporting grant application. Mr. Henley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. First off, thank you for allowing me to present this to you tonight. Um, we didn't learn about this funding opportunity until after the deadline for this hearing. And this is the last time the board meets before the grant application is due. So, um, we as staff, uh, put our heads together and came up with, uh, an idea to, uh, ask for funding through the North Carolina Emergency Management Transportation Infrastructure Resiliency Fund for a resiliency analysis of the Highway two-ten corridor between Rocky Point and Hampstead. Uh, as we know, we lost, uh, that corridor during Hurricane Florence. We've lost it before for other reasons. It is highly susceptible to natural hazards in, in more than one way. And we have already begun the process of collaboration with the Wilmington Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Cape Fear Rural Planning Organization, and Division Three of NCDOT. We know for sure that, uh, a resolution of support from the WMPO will be on their agenda at their next meeting. Chad Combs is in the process of drafting a support letter from Division Three. And hopefully, the RPO can get us one too. However, they don't meet before March thirty-first when the, uh, applications do.
So, so as everybody knows, um, th- this, this road is pretty narrow and, um, subject to flooding and, and other things. And it, while it's not the only way to get from east to west or west to east, um, it is, it is a main thoroughfare. And, um, it has quite a high volume and I expect that volume to con- continue to grow. So, while we've got, um, some attention for the Hampstead bypass and kicked off that, um, I thought it was a good time for us to work on the next big project, which is the widening of Highway two-ten from Rocky Point all the way across. Um, some of it will be done, some of the widening will be done. Um, right there where the bypass goes over, there'll, there'll be some improvements that are made. And there'll also be some improvements made at the intersection of seventeen and Highway two-ten. Um, those are different projects, but, um, all in all, um, I think everybody recognizes that, we need to get this project moving and, and get it, uh, through the process. So, um, I appreciate you guys putting your heads together. I'm all in favor of this, um, and I just wanna make sure everybody understands where this originated, so.
And if we're, I wanna make sure that everybody hears this. If we're awarded the funds, the funds are one hundred percent of the project. There is no local match.
I couldn't possibly add anything to that.
Nope.
I think you summed it up well. I'll be, I'm willing to make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you.
It's what?
It's unanimous.
Is only having one second enough, Mr. Chairman?
No extra seconds, sir.
Well, now, now we're gonna move on to items nine point eight. Can we do all these at one time? Nine point eight, nine point nine?
Yes, sir, if that's what you would like to do.
Okay.
I think, I think we should in this case.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem with grouping these all together?
Not me.
Okay. Ms. Klein?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is three resolutions, um, authorizing the sale of county-owned property. Uh, the first parcel number, two-two-nine-one-seven-eight-one-three-three-eight dash zero-zero-zero, generally known as Lot Six in Pender Commerce Park. Parcel number, two-two-nine-one-seven-eight-seven-seven-zero-four dash zero-zero-zero, also generally known as Lot Seven in Pender Commerce Park. And two additional parcel numbers, also generally known as Lots Twelve, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Eighteen, and Nineteen in Pender Commerce Park.
So, um, I don't wanna say too much about this. We're moving forward with this sale. Um, this was a request, a late, late request from the title company.
Housekeeper, more or less.
Yes. And we've shown support in the past. And in fact, we had minutes, we had all kinds of documentation around where this board has, has considered this previously. Um, this is just a formal, um, dotting the i's and crossing the t's so that, uh, the title company will feel better about this. Uh, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands what we're doing here. Any questions?
I'd be glad to make the, I'd gladly make the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous? Did I do better that time?
You didn't sound like you had a high score, did you?
So, at this time, we'll move on to section ten, item ten point one, reviewing and or approval of B O C C rules of procedures. Is Ms. Klein gonna talk about this or am I gonna talk about this?
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman. I, I put a copy on your, as well as emailed it.
Yeah. Um, why don't you start off? So, yeah, why don't you kick this off?
Okay. These are, it's a listing of rules or procedures for the Pender County Board of Commissioners. Um, it covers the Roberts Rules of Order for, uh, procedures. And it also touches base for, um, citizen committees outside of this board.
Yeah, so, um, it came to my attention that we had never formally approved all these rules of procedures, although they had been collected and they had been followed. Um, and we've been usel- utilizing these. So, uh, Ms. Klein has, has brought these forth. I think that we need to adopt these formally and, um, make sure that, um, they're utilized.
So, nothing was changed, correct? I mean, we're, we're not changing anything.
Same ones?
Yes, ma'am.
Have reviewed several months ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've pretty much been operating, but this clears up a little, little bit of gray, gray area. But it, it does leave some room for circumstances that unforeseen or things like with board members or stuff like that, like in the public boards.
Yeah, I think it would give a great deal of guidance to new board members. And I would have liked to have had this. If I had not served on prior boards, I would have been somewhat.
Well, I don't think we, we need you to know what the rules.
I don't think you still do.
This definitely gets clear.
It does. I think it's a good thing.
And, and some of these are specific to what our board has been doing.
Absolutely.
It's not just Roberts Rules, cause.
Yep.
Just like the rule that we have about.
Yep.
A unanimous vote tonight, that was a perfect example of that.
Yep.
The other thing was, uh, we choose to let our chairman, um, serve without making the motion or a second. He gets the vote or she gets the vote, but they have to, so that's kinda specific to what we do.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, for bringing this back up before us.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we had, we had discussion and, uh, and approval.
That's right. So, I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
You want a second? Motion or second?
No, 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 we're good.
Might need later, save it.
Thank you.
It's good to have it right.
It is.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
It helps the file.
Yep. All right, we're gonna move on to section eleven, appointments. Eleven point one, approval of appointment, um, to Pender County or Pender Fire and EMS Board. Um, this is the Fields application.
Yes.
One, one thing that needs to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I got you.
Um, Ms. Klein, do you wanna take eleven point one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this appointment request is for a reappointment for Patricia Fields to the Pender County Fire and EMS Board, um, representing District Two. Her application was attached for the board's review. If approved, the appointment will be for three years and expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, just one observation and this certainly doesn't have to do, anything to do with the applicant's qualifications, uh, but just as a way we do business. When boards come up and if someone wants to be reconsidered, could we have them resubmit an application? Uh, because there's things that may or may not have changed in that interim and people move and come back and things of that nature. But, um, apparently, this is the same application, this application is dated December twenty-eleven, so.
That's a good point. Yeah, yeah. But, oh, and.
Does she, i- is this a recent application or?
Well, I will tell you, she's, she's doing a good job as a chair.
Well, I'm quite sure and, and again.
You bring up a great point, though.
Nothing that has to do with the applicant, but we would like renewed and refreshed, um.
Understand.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
When you say it, you go, we, why weren't we doing it?
Yeah.
But, so, good point. You entertain a motion, Mr. Chair?
We will.
Move and approve.
We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous? Motion carries?
And next, we have, um, for the same board, Fire, uh, Pender County Fire EMS, Greg Holloman is applying for appointment to the Pender County Fire and EMS Board, representing District Five. Um, his appointment would be for three years and expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I, I have a question for, um, board member Queens. Um, you're way more familiar than I am with this and how Pender EMS, uh, and Fire Board is comprised. Are there a certain reserved amount of seats for employees and outside people? Because it's my understanding that this individual was an employee who is going to retire and now wishes to remain on the board.
Yeah, he has retired. Yeah, he has retired and wants to be on the board as, as a citizen appointment.
As a, okay.
Yeah. And, uh, he's been a good board member, good open-minded board member. We're going through. he's been a good board member, good, open-minded board member. We're going through a lot of things, a lot of talks right now, and I think he can bring a lot to the table, so.
He's very well qualified.
Yeah, he'll do a good job.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Williams and I, and myself, had had a couple discussions relative to this. So Mr. Holloman's, um, is serving as a citizen rep capacity, and while he's worked in that capacity previously, this is, this is a position that, you know, we gotta consider what's best for the, for the citizens and, and whom he represents. So he's aware of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well aware.
And he was the only applicant? Okay.
He's in my district, so I'll record, make a motion.
All right, we have a, a motion for Mr. McCoy. We have a second. All those in favor? It passes. There was no dissent.
And as always, I'd just like to make the comment that with any board vacancies, we truly appreciate citizens' involvement and willingness to serve on boards and, and help us out with that.
They're all important.
They're all important. Everyone of them. That's exactly right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to ask if I can do excuse.
Yes.
I've got a funeral to attend, so I need to leave.
Drive safe. Thank you.
Yes, please. Please drive safely. Commissioner Brown had spoke to me prior to the meeting and he's.
I'll make a second before you leave.
Chairman, can we get a motion to excuse?
We, we have a motion to excuse and a second. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. All right, we're down to Section twelve. Do we need to open as any of the water and sewer districts, Mr. Shipley or Mr. Van?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Van.
I didn't see Mr. Keel. Okay. So we'll skip right on down to item, or Section seventeen, Pender County Board of Health. Ms. Moser? And we'll gavel in as a Board of Health, so we get credit.
Absolutely. I'm just going to give you a very, very brief COVID update. And our positivity rate today was three point eight percent, and the state's two point six. And for the first time, we're the lowest positivity rate in the county, so can't help but be thrilled about that. We are averaging less than fifteen new cases a day now, and so our numbers are coming down quite a bit. What I wanted to point out, just real quick, is that the state is looking at changing the way they now keep updates and track our COVID numbers. They're going to go to some weekly entries instead of daily. But aside from that, they're also going to start encouraging people to go to the CDC COVID tracker site. And on this, you can check on Pender County, and it'll give you everything from the cases and the death rates to hospitalizations and percent positivity, and those that are vaccinated, and those that have had boosters, et cetera. So it's gonna be a really nice document that you can look at. Right now, it also, a lot of people have talked about whether we're a red county or a yellow county or whatever. And right now, we are of moderate risk. A lot of the state has come down from being at totally high risk for COVID. And so that's another good thing, is that things seem to be improving here in the state. But these, this data information, this data tracker, any county resident that wants to pull it up can go to the CDC site and go to the COVID data tracker and put in Pender County, North Carolina, and, and they'll get a report real quick. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions before she gets away?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close as the Board of Health. Wes, do we need to open as the DSS? Come on up and explain your email to the board. We're gonna open as the Board of DSS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past week, I emailed the chairman and the county commissioner. The DSS directors in Trillium's catchment area had sent out a letter requesting support for regionalization of a specialized Medicaid plan for foster children. And the Directors Association, as well as the state, agree that it should be a single point. And the DSS directors were concerned about this because we kind of felt we got end- rounded by going to the commissioners and to the county manager. And so hence my email. The Association thinks, as well as the state, that, that this specialized plan needs to be run by one entity. Whether that's Trillium, Blue Cross Blue Shield, or whomever, whoever is the best applicant for the RFP. And my concern with supporting Trillium, and I think Trillium has done and, and made efforts, but they do not have the full continuum of care, especially with difficult-to-place children. And so I, I talked to the Southern Regional Director about the letter of support and indicated to him that I was declining to sign it. And I wanted to make sure that I had gotten that to the chair and to the county manager, so that they could be aware. I think it's just a better way of doing things. That way, there's, there's one entity that we can call that controls all the services for this population in the state, and there's one entity that we can hold accountable for problems that come up.
Okay, so what's the path forward from this point?
So the directors are working with the state. What Trillium was trying to do was trying to get directors and counties to.
Authorize them?
Say, well, really to give them a letter of support stating that they thought it should be regionalized. And, and while I appreciate that, I, I just don't think it's the best way to go.
I would rather tie that organization inherently to the county's DSS partners, whether we want it to be or not.
And it may not factor or consider all of our unique needs here.
Well, and again, I'm not trying to, to nail Trillium to the wall or anything. They.
Just playing devil's advocate as to why.
And I, I just, I, I know, and I, I know that the county manager knows. I've, I've had, and currently have, a difficult-to-place child that, you know, I've had him in my building up to three weeks at a time. He's on a multitude of psychotropic medications. I don't have anybody over there that is, that can provide med management. And so we have to say, well, here are your meds, and he actually has to take them. I mean, we, you know, we can't say. So, and, you know, this young man has been in several, in fact, over forty placements that we've been involved with. And it's just a difficult situation. I'll kind of leave it at that. So we just feel like that there really needs to be one entity that is accountable for helping us place these children and making sure that they get the, the best care that we can.
Well, I appreciate you raising this and not just rubber-stamping it and, and working to resolve the issue that you just spoke about. I think we have, or I'm speaking somewhat for you guys, but we have full confidence in you. You've demonstrated through your leadership that you, you've made some significant strides over in DSS. I really appreciate your efforts.
You must speak for me on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna come out of being the DSS Board, and at this time, we're down to item, or Section nineteen. Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, sir. The, and got a list of items for closed session. The board would consider Item Three, Attorney-client. Item Four, Economic Development. And Item Five, Acquisition of Real Property.
Got it? Anything else, Mr. Chairman? Chad, you got anything for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Couple items, just as an update. The four million dollars that the county receives for the, the corridor improvement at four-twenty-one related to the intersection in Corporate Drive as well as Vitamin Drive. We were bringing a board, a board ordinance amendment, I'm sorry, a budget ordinance amendment back to the board to consider. Formally acknowledging those funds, we have worked with Trey and, and Chairman on the required agreement with DOT for those funds, with the county being the fiduciary for, for distribution of those funds for the required work on those two TIA, TIA Traffic Impact Assessments, which required by DOT for those two projects. That'll be on, on next month's agenda.
Okay.
We're planning to move forward with the closings on both the DDL Track and the Kaufman Track in the next couple of weeks before the, the next board meeting. We've done, just some of those, been working with Harold Pollak's office on, on the title. We've had it surveyed. So we will be moving forward those closings pursuant to the board's directive. Last week, I got a call regarding the BASF demo project. There was a, a, essentially an underground vault that was found underneath one of the buildings. If you recall, we did subsurface radar detection on the property beside the underground water utility lines, sewer utility lines. This vault was not found because it was under several feet of concrete of the slab, and then an additional twenty-four inches of concrete underneath the slab. We've gone ahead and had that removed, but there will be an associated change order somewhere in the range of seventy to eighty thousand dollars related to it.
Is it gonna be within our contingency?
Yes, sir. We're, we're still at, even with this change order, we're still at the ten to eleven percent contingency mark on the project. Which, given all the uncertainty we had going into the demo, is still a, a really strong number for all the question marks that we, we could have incurred. I was out there yesterday at the property. There's nothing visible on the property other than a dent. And several large piles of dirt to backfield where they're pulling utility lines out.
So we're on schedule, and we're still in budget?
We're still in budget, eighty-five percent complete, and no, no education at this point in the contract is any issue with being completed by April one.
Great, great.
But that change order, because of its size, will need to come back to the board for approval next month.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for the county manager? Chad, I appreciate you joining today. I hope you're feeling okay.
Thank you, sir.
Take, take the time you need to get your, your, your well-being in order. We can hope down the fort if, if need be. Just glad you didn't get hurt. Just glad you didn't really get hurt during that accident, so.
Thank you.
All right, Doug?
Just to follow up on what the Parks and Rec presentation, we've had a couple of community input meetings here recently. One was last Thursday at Hampstead Quonis Park. One was, I believe, the week before that, or ten days before that, in Bergall, to get additional comments on the, the plan that's already out there for the public. So just, and, and also, we had it in front of the Planning Board and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, both of which approved of the plan going forward. That's correct? So I just wanted to mention that, and again, it will come to, back to this board, I believe, on the first session in April for adoption.
Very good. Mr. Van?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Newt?
I've had several calls lately, and it has been a problem, but it seems to be every week we're getting more and more calls and responds, calls for response to automobile accidents at Mopass Corner in four-twenty-one. That's a dangerous intersection, and I, and I don't understand. I know, and it has been going on for thirty-six years. I've invited citizens to come and speak. They indicated that they would today, but I just thought I'd speak for them. So it, it, it is a bad intersection, and for some unknown reason, much like the intersection used to be out there at the Hot Dog Place out on one-seventeen. That was a trap for accidents.
The Old Place?
Yeah, Paul's Place. Yeah, I defended a lot of those. So anyway, we need to look into seeing what we can do to alleviate that. It's right there at a school, and it is a significant safety, public safety issue. I want to give a shout-out, Ms. Moser, to your Animal Control Department. I have an elderly fellow who's half-blind, he can't hear, and he wandered off the reservation yesterday, and I found him first thing this morning, and they had taken good care of him. So I think our, our animal control dollars are being well-spent. And I had an opportunity to go through your facility today, and it looked real good, real good. Always a pleasure to interact with those folks. That's all I have.
Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I might make, several years ago, I had DOT looking at intersection, really bad intersection, Mount Pass Corner Road and four-twenty-one. So they need to look at it again. I didn't put a blinking light out there anymore. I think some blinking light there, I think. So they need to look at, that's a lot of wrecks there, I think.
You're on the RPO, you can bring that up again with them, right?
Yeah. I just want to say, I was, I had the opportunity to be at the Grand Open, groundbreaking for the Hampstead bypass. And I'm gonna say David Peemeyer did a really good job explaining their distributional, the support we have from the Brunswick, New Hanover, Pender, not just Pender County, but elected officials. Had thought that was, you made a good talk on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, really good. It was a proud day to be there, and he got moving up dirt, and the contractor was moving in Friday, I believe it did. But the contractor was there moving equipment, and so that's exciting for all of Pender County. I just had to say.
Proud day for all of us. Sorry I couldn't been there.
Well, it was, it was very exciting. The Secretary of Transportation came down. The Chief Operating Officer for NC DOT was also in attendance. They were very much aware of how important this, this project is, not only to Pender County, but to the region. It's gonna provide another evacuation route. It's gonna be able to help the Marine Corps transport personnel and equipment between Sunny Point and Camp Lejeune. And it's also gonna immediately remove some of the congestion that's on Highway seventeen. So, you know, we're very, very excited that this day has finally come. We'll be more excited when that stretch is completed and we start working on the next eight miles. And I was, I was very happy to, to be able to represent the county at that meeting, at that kickoff ceremony, so.
As well you should, all the work you put into it.
Well, thank you.
All the trips to Raleigh you put into it.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else, Mr. McCoy?
Oh, that's it.
All right. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I'm gonna take this time just to, to officially try to swatch a couple rumors that are kind of tied together. And I think, you know, you guys have heard about one of them, but our school board chair, Brad, Brad George, walked up to me the other day and goes, "I hear the only one, I hear the only reason that you are." "I hear the only one, I hear the only reason that you are, um, this may not be quite verbatim, but you'll get the gist, is that you, uh, pushing these talks to see about a possible merger between Pender EMS and Fire and Pender County is because you're going to work to Novant, you want the county to get Pender EMS and Fire and spin it off to Novant." Now, those are lies across the board. There has never been any discussion on me going to work for Novant, so I'm making that official now, not going to work for Novant, uh, that I'm aware of, and I'm pretty aware of what I got going on, and that's, that's not going to happen. Um, but I take exception more to the fact that somebody would go around assuming that's true, and people would, would go around and say that. There's a lot of rumor mills flying, and there is anytime you talk about change, and it's natural, it's human nature. But, this is my twentieth year, and I think all but just a couple of years when Mister, I'm not sure of the date, I don't, you know, I don't keep track of that stuff, I don't need it for my ego, but I've been on there mostly, most of my twenty years. I've been on Pender EMS and Fire, and I've advocated for them at every single budget time, and I talked to Everett and talked to the board today. And so, somebody that really knows the time, time and effort I've got vested in as a board member, that I would never do anything to detract away from the employees, from the reputation. Um, and I just think it's ludicrous. And, uh, so, I, I would ask people, the next time you hear a rumor, something like that, just, just give me a call and ask, but this particular one is just preposterous, because if you think that Novant would wanna take that on, you don't know what it takes to run EMS and Fire. It is a big undertaking, and it's not a moneymaker. I think some people think, "We're not making money, are we, Mister Everett?" No, that's why it takes tax, tax dollars to run EMS and Fire, and we have, across the county, not just Pender EMS and Fire, but we got paramedic coverage in a nine-hundred-square-mile county, and we have since the early two thousands. And we've got excellent fire ratings in Pender County by our fire departments, but it takes a lot of dough to do that. It's not a moneymaker, so for someone to go around, spreading rumors around, if they, if they know anything about it and they're spreading rumors, then it must be for selfish issues. Maybe they're worried about their job or something like that, or that they just don't know anything about it. That's all I can think of, but there's no need. Um, 'cause we got a lot of things to cover. We're, we're gonna be talking about possibly merging these two companies to try to do what's best for the county, and try to protect employees and things of that nature. And we don't need rumors like this going around, but I think that's exactly what some people want. So, I'm here to, to try to squash those rumors. It is, there's no truth, there's no substance to them whatsoever in any way, shape, or form. I'm gonna be concentrating on my sales job for the next probably decade, 'cause I'm gonna have more time when I'm not on this board. No offense to anyone, but that's, that's my focus. I'm not gonna be in the hospital business. I'm gonna remain, uh, at this time, I'm on the, uh, Novant Coastal Board. And that's a, that's not a, that's not a down-in-the-weeds board like the New Hanover Board was. It's a, it's just a regional board. And so, I'm currently on that board, and that is as close as I'll get to, to anything like that. Um, but just, just, uh, usually don't get into the rumor business, but this, this, this affects more than me. It affects hundreds of people.
Commissioner Williams, I'm glad you addressed that, because that relationship, and having served with Novant, and what we've got going on with Novant, and what we will have going on with our population growth and our medical needs in the region, um, I'm, I'm, I'm gratified that you addressed that, because it has more far-reaching implications than just simply what has been addressed here today.
Exactly.
And, and, you know, it is an election year. Um, and like it or not, there's gonna be a lot of things said, you're not running for reelection, so there's, that's not the excuse for you. Um, but, you know, I, I would just caution people to take what they hear that's unverified with a grain of salt. Look who has served, look how they have served, and look at the folks that we have serving our citizens with integrity. And, and just rely on that, uh, or go to the source.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that clarification, anything else, Commissioner Williams?
No, sir, you guys, I mean, the, obviously, I mean, one of the best, one of the best feeling was turning that symbolic dirt, uh, of those shovels that were painted with gold paint. We didn't have gold shovels, so, uh, I've heard that one too, you know, so.
Yeah, that's your job, I'm sure what you do, somebody's gonna say something about you.
Well, this, this is not about, this is not about me, it's about the organizations and, and the outreach and effects, to try to taint what could be good. Like you said, there's things, other things with Novant that, that are far more important than any one of us sitting up here, and that's the only reason I brought it up. I usually not in the habit of addressing a rumor, but this, that was just, that's just, uh, it's selfish, and it's, uh, it's a few, or it's just a few people, but they got big mouths.
Well, I wanna, I wanna say that, um, you're, you're done, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, stop me now.
Nah, I, I wanna say that, um, we had a very successful retreat. I appreciate the, um, staff and, and, uh, all the participants, um, that came to the retreat and presented some of the strategic updates, um, that we had identified on that agenda. Um, I think it was a very, um, informative meeting. I think there were some good discussion, and, um, I think there were some good i- items that came out of the, those discussions, so. Um, again, uh, thank you to the staff and to all the, the participants of that. It's a value add to me, I know it's a day and a half, um, and it's a tough day and a half. Um, it's very long, uh, but at the same time, I think it's valuable to, uh, to us as commissioners and to the county to recognize where, where we need to go long-term and what we're doing in the short term to get there, so. Um, we do have our next meeting, April fourth. Um, it'll be here in Bergall. I wa- I wanna make, it's down the list on the agenda, but I wanna make sure everybody hears that. Um, and I guess with that, we're ready to go into closed session. We do have a seven o'clock meeting agenda items, um, three different agenda items, but, um, I'll consider a motion to move into closed session.
Mister Chairman, I believe we go into closed session for item three, attorney-client. Item four, economic development, and item five, acquisition of real property.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We got a motion and a second, all those in favor? It's unanimous, the motion carries, we are in closed session.
Seven o'clock, public hearing session. The first item is 21.1. Mr. Henley.
Thanks, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. This first case is going to be presented by Vanessa Lacer. However, I already see our Deere County attorney standing up, and I know what that means.
If you're going to speak for either of the first two items, you will need to be sworn in or firm, if you prefer. We're still not having people gather that closely together, so you can stand where you are. You would raise your right hand. You swear the testimony gives even truth, the whole truth, nothing but to help you God.
I do.
Thank you all. Anyone prefer to be affirmed? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Henley.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, presenting the first case is Vanessa Lacer.
Okay, good evening. I will be presenting the case 2022-24, special use permit. Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless applicant on behalf of Jimmy and Lisa Shackelford owners is requesting approval of a special use permit for the construction and operation of a passive, unstaffed telecommunications facility to include a 280-foot tower, five-foot lightning rod, and associated equipment within a 70-foot by 70-foot fenced compound within a 100-foot by 100-foot lease area. The subject property is zoned RA, rural agriculture. The neighboring properties are zoned similarly, with the exception of the Environmental Conservation District to the northeast of the property, which is the Angola Bay game land. This property is located on the north side of Highway 53 east in the Holly Shelter Township. And the subject property is 105.95 acres. The project site will be set back from the right-of-way, 845 feet. It will be set back from the western border, 1,883 feet. It will be set back from the eastern border, 397 feet, and from the rear border, 1,095 feet. The entrance to the site is an existing sand road on Highway 53. Here you can see a little bit closer the project site, which has an adjoining parking area. We are not requiring a minimum parking here as it is unstaffed, so there will be no daily coming and going necessitating parking. You can also see surrounding the project site is the vegetative buffer, which is existing vegetation. It is mature trees. And then to the lower part of the site plan, you'll see where the line is for the 100-year floodplain. So the project site is located outside of that.
Did you say 100-year?
Yes, the 100-year. The subject property is located in the RA Future Land Use zoning district of the Hender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan. So it is currently rural ag- So it is currently rural agriculture, and it is rural agriculture in the future land use plan as well. And these are the six proposed conditions when considering issuing of a special use permit. We do have the applicant, a representative from Falken Foster, Ralph Wingardt, as well as Jimmy and Lisa Shackelford are here tonight, and I'll turn the floor over to them to make any additional comments.
So I assume these proposed conditions came out of the the planning board, or where did they originate?
These are from our Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay.
These are typical conditions that are added to any SUP we bring forward as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Ralph Wingardt from Falken Foster, six-seventy-eight Front Avenue Northwest, Suite two-fifty-five in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Here on behalf of Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. Again, as mentioned, the Shackelfords, the property owners, are here as well. Thank you for your time this evening, and thanks to staff for the good summary. This is a location that desperately needs coverage. This, the intent for this site is to fill in between Berga and Maple Hill along Highway fifty-three. Should be about a six-mile radius. It'll help not only the convenience for residents and businesses, but also public safety. We've picked a spot, which is kind of a high ground on that parcel. And again, as was mentioned, surrounded by immature forests, so it's well screened from the highway and from neighboring property lines. There are no current existing towers in the vicinity, so this will be a piece of critical infrastructure for the county. And Verizon Wireless will own the tower and be the first occupant, but we also encourage co-location by other providers. So it's designed to accommodate an additional three providers. And we work with localities for emergency services, antennas, and so on, if that's needed as well. So basically, it'll serve the community. We think it's in an appropriate location and distance enough from property lines and streets to be compatible with the area. So we'd respectfully ask for your approval of a special use permit for the project. I'm happy to answer any questions about the details, if you want to get into it further, or if there's members of the public.
I got, I got two questions.
Okay.
So what's the height of the tower?
It's two-hundred-and-eighty feet.
What's, is that above? Is that unique? Is that higher than any of the other towers that we have?
I'm not sure what else you have. It's pretty typical for a rural site that covers an area as this one does. The fill-in spot's about a six-mile radius at that height, and that's what's needed to kind of close that gap.
And I assume that it's rated to withstand how much in wind? Because we have, we do have occasional hurricanes here.
It is designed to meet all the applicable wind standards.
Okay.
There are a few towers in Pender County that are.
That are two-eighty?
There's actually a few.
Three hundred.
To my knowledge, the one on Hoover Road is actually taller than that.
Is that a mon, are they monos, or are they just like typical?
This is a lattice tower.
This is a lattice supporting lattice.
Tower, yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for them? Okay, do we have any, anybody signed up to speak on this?
We have no sign-ups, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All righty, thank you. I guess we're at the point of.
I don't have any more questions.
This is your district, Mr. McCord?
Yes, my district, and, you know, I want to vote for approval.
You want to make a motion?
Make a motion for approval, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds.
It's always better than none.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Motion carries.
I'm happy to see that this tower's going up because I know that they can partner for Highway Patrol, Health and Human Re, uh, Safety, Health Services, Ambulances, EMS. It's a needed utility for that area, so thank you for bringing that to us.
Appreciate it. Thank you all. Safe travels home. All right, Mr. Henley, we're going to move on to twenty-one point two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. I'm going to take this one myself. Case SUP twenty-two dash twenty-six is a special use permit application revision, actually. Old North State Water Company LLC applicant and owner is seeking a revision to the existing special use permit for the Majestic Oaks wastewater treatment facility. Specifically, the request is to accommodate an existing sewage lift station that was constructed prior to a needed revision to the existing special use permit. As a reminder, as I know the board has seen this site before, this site is located on the eastern side of the Majestic Oaks subdivision, about a half-mile east of the intersection of US Highway seventeen and two-ten in Hampstead, along Dan Owen Drive and across from Milne, Milne Way. I never know how to say that word, I'm sorry. Two tracts are approximately five-point-three-nine acres in size. Another view just from the aerial, and are, can be identified by the pins located in your packet. And again, they are zoned by RP Residential Performance. The subject properties are located within the Majestic Oaks subdivision, as I mentioned, and currently serves as the wastewater treatment facility for Majestic Oaks, as well as the shopping center anchored by Food Lion, the Saltres Haven community, as well as the development formerly known as Gray Bull, but now known as the Sanctuary of Forest Sound. The treatment facility was originally approved through a special use permit by the board in June two thousand and seven, subsequently amended in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Existing infrastructure on the subject property includes wastewater treatment plant, wastewater collection system, disposal area, and the lagoons.
So let me interject here.
Yes, sir.
This is in my area. The last time we talked about this, weren't there some non-compliance issues? And were the actions that were committed to ever completed?
As far as the improvements that they were, that were proposed the last time this came.
Yeah, we had some non-compliance issues that drove to some, some commitments, right?
To my knowledge, the compliance issues were resolved, however, the proposed improvements were not installed.
They were not implemented?
No.
Is it, is it appropriate here to remind that we have some different players involved than we did back then?
I would defer to the applicant on that particular question, but there are a few different players involved now, yes.
I understand. I recognize. So, carry on. I'll ask my next question when you get further.
Just stop me whenever you need to.
Okay.
There was some, there was some serious issues going on.
Yeah.
According to the applicant submitted narrative, Old North State Water Company LLC, O N S W C, is requesting a revision to the existing SUP to accommodate the already constructed lift station within the facility. Roughly located where that red box is located on the screen. Applicant submitted narrative is in your packet, by the way. It's the first attachment. Planning staff were informed in October of two thousand and twenty-one that a lift station was constructed on the subject properties and determined that this construction took place prior to obtaining any zoning approval. As a result, code enforcement measures have been taken, and the property is currently under a notice of violation, which was issued on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, my interpretation of what you just said is that we start, they started building a lift station before they had acquired the proper zoning permits and building permits?
The zoning, particularly in the context of our notice of violation, yes.
Okay, so this SUP is a remedy to that situation?
It is, it is part two of three parts to remedy that situation.
Okay, so, I assume there's a stop work in order in place, right?
When the notice of violation was issued, we almost immediately received the applications for for the variance, which I was about to get into, and the special use permit. But we have visited the site multiple times since, and the work has occurred.
Okay. So I guess you're going to outline the status compared to the requirements of the current? I mean, since the work started, we have to evaluate it to what is required, right?
Correct.
To see if we can be compliant.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm about to dive into kind of the trickiest.
Okay, I just want.
Yes.
That's always good for everybody listening to.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what's going on here, so thank you.
If there's anything you feel I didn't cover, please stop me.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
So on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, this case was presented to the Pender County Board of Adjustment for a variance case. A variance is a case-specific, essentially, it's not really a waiver, but it's a modification of ordinance standards in particular cases for particular reasons. In the case of this project, a variance was requested from the required front setback, which typically, under the RP zoning district standards, would be thirty feet from the right-of-way line, which in this case, the right-of-way line is essentially the edge of the pavement on Dan Owen. It's actually the access easement that covers it. They requested a twenty-three-foot encroachment into the front setback to render a front set, a new front setback of seven feet. By extension, they also requested a modification of the required buffer standards. Typically, lift stations such as this would require a type-C buffer, the narrowest of which is ten feet. Obviously, if they're asking for a front setback of only seven feet, then they won't be able to make that ten-foot either. And so they were also requesting a waiver from the width of that buffer requirement. Ultimately, this variance was approved. It was also approved with a slight modification to the buffer, is that fencing shall be installed in accordance with the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance for all structures above grade, however, not as part of the buffer. And then the second condition added by the Board of Adjustment was that all fines incurred or to be incurred due to the zoning violation currently pending on the subject property shall be paid. They did not specify a timeframe in that approval. And so I would ask the board and the county attorney to weigh on that front in terms of when those fees shall be paid.
So how do we determine the period by which we set the fines?
It's from the date that the notice of violation is issued. Till the zoning approval is issued. And zoning approval is not the approval of the special use permit. It's the site plan approval that occurs after the special use permit, which is why this is, this is part two of three. There's a site plan approval process that every project has to go through regardless of whether it needs an SUP or a rezoning or whatever. We have to do that part two and issue our approval before the zoning violation is lifted.
So the fines will continue to be incurred up to the point of complete resolution?
Correct. Yes, sir. As of today, they are roughly, they've accrued to roughly ten thousand dollars.
And we make the determination when it's completed by the issuance of the zoning permit?
Which verifies that we have a site plan that meets all applicable standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is the site plan. It is an existing site, as you can see. Here is Dan Owen, right here as well. And then here is the proposed C buffer that surrounds the site.
So.
Yes.
When did the change in ownership occur?
I don't believe the change of ownership has actually happened yet.
It hasn't?
No.
Okay.
And Old North State is still, it's still listed as the owner, and they're, they're.
Owner operator. They're the owner, they're a operator.
Yes, as of today.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so they own this then too. Okay. Everything that's been explained in here, will it encroach on anybody else's property other than Old North State property?
No.
So even if we give them remedy to the twenty-three feet, it's only encroaching on their own property, it's just not meeting the stated setbacks?
That's absolutely correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
All right. Just as a note through the zoning process of. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Aren't they, I mean, DOT is an entity, and they have property.
Sure.
The variance. The reduction of the setback effectively then, DOT does not have the setback, which they would have had had this been located as the setbacks are required under our orders, right?
Potentially, Dan Owen Drive not being a DOT road, though, at least not in this location.
Okay, all right, that's, all right, and if that's what, if it's not.
Yeah, Dan Owen Drive at this point is a private road.
So it's whoever has the right to Dan Owen Drive. So in order, if they wanted to expand Dan Owen Drive, there wouldn't be a setback there? Or the DOT could, oh, no, I'm just saying.
Potentially, but as, as it stands right now, the pavement has maxed out the access easement at this point anyway.
So I got to ask another question.
Sure.
The lift station is to enable the waste to be carried up to seventeen to the new owners.
Yes, sir.
Current infrastructure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got it. I got it. Okay, thank you. Well, when we get there, it'll fix a lot of problems, you guys.
All right. Again, there is just a little bit more in the ordinance. The site is accessed again from Dan Owen Drive, which is a private access easement. Pender U D O requires a T I A when the development generates more than a hundred trips in the morning or evening peak hours, or a thousand daily. This being a lift station, it does not meet that threshold. All landscaping and buffering, as proposed, are in conformance with the Unified Development Ordinance. We'll review that again as part of the zoning process to make sure that it is in conformance with the U D O, of course, also taking into account the variance that has already been approved by the Board of Adjustment.
So what will happen to the current facility because they won't need?
I'll defer that to the applicant.
Okay, I'll wait till they come up.
Okay. A little bit more information as to special flood hazard areas, wetlands, and areas of environmental concern, and then any signage will be reviewed for compliance with our code as it comes forward through a separate permit process.
What they're proposing will address all the nine issues?
To my knowledge, yes.
But we will have to give them a couple of variances that still will be on their property, but will be non-conforming to our standard code.
Right. As approved by the Board of Adjustment already, there are those variances. And then this to revise the SUP to allow for this use. Just a couple of pictures of the site as it currently exists. This is also a good point to know that public notice was indeed provided for this hearing. As, there's our little sign right there. Let's see, a couple of other pictures, just looking back towards Dan Owen Drive from behind the site. This as well, looking the other direction. Conditions to consider in issuing a special use permit. Again, the first six are those same kind of boilerplate conditions that we proposed with the last SUP and with most of the previous SUPs in the last couple of years. I will note number seven is that all prior conditions of approval related to Majestic Oaks wastewater treatment facility shall apply, or shall continue to apply is really probably what that should say. However, there's a caveat to that. These are the original fourteen conditions. Number eight is redundant because we've already got one that covers that. And then ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen were specific to the it being a wastewater treatment facility as opposed to a lift station. I do, and I, I do need to point this out. Condition number nine, which was previously applicable and is, we're proposing to keep applicable. Any physical improvements to the site, including ponds, structures, et cetera, that expands the footprint of the existing land use would require approval from the Board of Commissioners via special use permit, so.
I don't like the way we've done that.
More than happy to dive into.
I want to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Unless you guys got a. Unless you guys got a, you can, Mr. Newton or McCoy?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. You got a question?
Not really. I used to get calls about this site, and from what's been presented, this is gonna make some things go away.
I don't have any questions because my familiarity level with this applicant is not anywhere near yours, so I'm gonna bow to your.
Okay. Well, as normal, I just want to explain this to everybody that's in the room. This is in my district, but because of our rules, I can't make a motion or a second, so I'll give you my opinion when we get through this process as to what I think of it, but I won't be able to give a motion or a second, so. Is the applicant ready to speak? Okay. You look familiar. I think we've seen you before.
You've seen me a couple of times.
Okay. You want to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. My name is Karen Kimmerite. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild in Raleigh, and my address is four-three-four Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, two-seven-six-zero-four. And I'm the attorney, I've been before you on behalf of Old North State Water Company, and I represent Old North State Water Company as well. I also have John McDonald, who is the owner, thank you, of Old North State Water Company. He is here. He is speaking with a neighbor right now. And Maurice Valarda, who is the president of Pluris Hampstead, is here as well.
Yeah, we recognized him. Good to see you. Good to see you.
And we have some engineers as well from Pluris who are here to answer any questions.
Very good.
So, I want to, I want to begin first, I've got a presentation that I was gonna provide, but I wanted to address the questions that you had asked first.
Okay.
So, the variance has already been granted, it was a unanimous vote by the Board of Adjustment to reduce the setback and the buffer requirements. There was no opposition whatsoever to the variance request, including from the property owners who were most directly affected, who lived across the street from where the lift station will be located. And the wastewater treatment facility is owned by this same company that was, has owned it for many years, Old North State Water Company. But the plan is, the wastewater treatment facility has some, I think, pretty significant environmental issues. And we have, this special use amendment to the special use permit is going, and I'll talk in more detail about it in a minute, but this is going to solve all of those problems. The plan is, we have, we have two kind of concurrent processes that are occurring. The first process is before the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And the plan is to have the wastewater treatment facility ownership transferred from Old North State Water Company to Pluris. And the Utilities Commission, and Pluris, Pluris has the operational ability, the financial ability, and a fantastic MBR plant that's located off-site.
And they have a lot of credibility with Pender County.
Right, and a lot of credibility, and across the state too as well. And with the Utilities Commission. So that is a great solution, and the Utilities Commission is gonna be, they have to approve the transfer of a private wastewater company.
Yep.
So that is the first process. And then the second process is this amendment to the special use permit, and this is necessary because in order for the wastewater from Majestic Oaks and the other areas that are being treated in the Majestic Oaks wastewater treatment plant to be transported to Pluris's MBR plant, we have to have the lift station.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah. And so, once, once we have approval from the Utilities Commission, and once the lift station is completely constructed, then the existing wastewater treatment facility is going to be decommissioned and removed. So it will be a great solution for the Majestic Oaks residents because it'll be taking a wastewater treatment facility that's in the middle of this subdivision, out of the subdivision.
Right at the entrance, not too far from the entrance.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so the other thing I, before.
So let me ask this question before I forget, because my mind's not very good anymore. When would this, what's the timeline for this to be completed? If we give approval today, what would be the timeline for this transaction to be completed and the lift station to be functional, and Pluris to own the?
So, we are, we are nearing the end of the process before the Utilities Commission, and then, I think Maurice, or can you answer when, when the lift station will be completed, once we have, how long the process to finish it would be?
Good to be, seeing you guys again. It's been a couple of years. I've been busy in Dallas.
Yeah, we did.
We, the North Carolina Utilities Commission, by the way, as an announcement, is about to get another commissioner. And although I don't like lawyers, and that includes you too, Trey, and Kimmerite, but I like smart ones. And so Karen has been nominated by the governor, and through the kindness of Tim Moore and a couple of the great senators, she's been confirmed, and she'll be actually, well, not until she gets this done, even though she doesn't answer to me, she'll be headed to the commission.
Congratulations. Congratulations, that's a big honor.
I can go on record as a Republican, do you know what it's like to lobby a Democrat? I've got a speaking Democrat engineer out here, but anyway, they're smart people.
Yeah.
So, we've had, it's been a challenge with the Utilities Commission because, and John McDonald knows this, is that I think John's a good guy. I think he might have had some guys and some other firms that maybe weren't as sharp as knives in the drawer. And they've got problems at this point. I've known them all along. We've got a young lady in the back that has seepage coming through. We had, my fear, and I apologize for the, that's our fault. I'll take responsibility with you, Mr. Glant, on that, and Mr. Hoffa, for the easement issue. We're sophisticated company, but even sophisticated companies make mistakes. So, we don't violate ordinance on purpose. You guys know us. I was shocked when I saw that in the first place, but right now it is what it is. So that lift station is a seminal issue, and so we're not, we have not closed on the agreement yet. We're waiting for the commission, which it looks like they're moving forward. She unfortunately won't be able, she'll have to recuse herself from the voting, but but it looks like it's going through, and I have a great relationship with the commission. I know every one of them. I helped for them get appointed. And so, we anticipate that within a sixty-day horizon, that's gonna get approved if we go through with the deal. If we don't go through with the deal, and there's a small question mark there, because the facility is a mess. And there's a lot, and we went up to Onslow County, and you can contact Jack Wright, who's the commission chairman up there, is what we did at Webb Creek when he came in and was appointed as emergency operator, we fixed that, and we're planning on fixing this too. All I remember was the Majestic Oaks people want that plant out of their backyard. And the pond that was out there had what we contemplated, and part of the reason for us being in a hurry, Mr. Peemar, when we have the error, is that the Department of Environmental Protection, Dr. Morela Sanchez King, who runs the Wilmington, is a personal friend of mine. And they were, they were concerned about imminent slope failure within the pond itself. Had that happened, this would have been a bigger mess
Yes.
than what it is, and so, I told Randy to do whatever you do, get a lift station in, get it installed, get it so that you can bypass that facility and pull that stuff out of there.
Well, like I said, I actually live not too far from there.
You might have had a few inches of stuff in your backyard.
No, 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 but, no, but, but here's the thing. I think I'm very happy to learn that Pluris is getting involved. I think this solution ultimately is gonna be a fix, not only for the Majestic Oaks, but you're gonna, the old Gray Bull stuff, I think you're gonna end up with that, correct? And you're gonna end up with, also Salters Haven, right?
Correct.
So, you know, I think this is a win-win-win for everybody in connection to there. I, I feel very good about there won't be future issues here. I'm glad that we're able to resolve and get back in process. I just would very much like, look forward to getting the lift station built, getting this all where it's done, and the commission has approved the transfer from one private entity to the other, and I think the residents will be very, very happy going forward.
And, and Mr. Peemar, you know us.
I do.
I was asked in the back before this meeting to make a promise to help another neighbor out there, but I can't make a promise to something I don't know, so I'm sure we're gonna have some things, but we never not addressed issues.
Yes, I understand. And you've guys, you know, you came in here and have provided a needed service on the eastern side, and I really, really appreciate it. It provides a lot of solutions for our growth so that we don't have to continue to depend on individual septic tank systems, each to seventeen, which I'm very much against. I'd rather have a solution such as yours that is managed and run professionally and is compliant, so thank you very much. I appreciate you coming to this meeting and reassuring me.
You guys are great partners. We look forward to it.
Very good.
Okay, so I'll just add a little bit more information. As Maurice mentioned, the reason, it was an inadvertent mistake for starting construction of the lift station. It was in frankly just a rush to be able to treat the wastewater in Pluris's plant and solve what was viewed to be, and still is, kind of pending environmental problems. And when the county informed Old North State and Pluris about the mistake and that they should have had an amendment to the special use permit, and frankly, I think part of the confusion was, is that everyone knew that there was an existing special use permit in place, and so it was an oversight realizing that they needed to amend it to allow for this lift station. So they immediately ceased work on the lift station, and so construction has been halted during the process of getting the permits from the county, and then once, once we have the special use permit, and then the building permit, we'll be able, Pluris will be able to finish construction.
Okay, so let me, let me just, because this is something I learned very early on. Anytime you do anything to a special use permit, come to the planning office and tell them what you're gonna do, and say, do I need to amend my special use permit? Because more than likely, that site plan's gonna get you. If nothing else gets you, the site plan's gonna get you. That you need, it tells you right in there that you gotta update the site plan. So, if you, and this is for everybody that's listening, if you have an SUP and you're gonna make a change, just come to the planning department, and they will, they will guide you through the process, so. But I appreciate you sharing the sequence of events.
Right. And then, this solution also solves the problem for what Old North State had previously been planning to do, because I think that I believe the majority, if not all of the members of the board, were present in twenty eighteen when we, when Old North State came forward to amend our special use permit. And one of your questions, and so the plan to amend the special use permit was, is that the wastewater treatment plant has capacity of sixty thousand gallons per day. And the plan was, was to substantially increase the capacity so that the wastewater from Salters Haven and Gray Bull, that's now Forest Sound, could come into Majestic Oaks and be treated in this wastewater treatment plant. So not only, so it's a, it's a great solution because that wastewater is not going to be brought into Majestic Oaks, and instead it'll be treated off-site. If, you know, we are all very optimistic that this deal is gonna go through, but this is, you know, one of the pieces of the deal. And if it didn't go through, then unfortunately, the wastewater treatment facility would have to remain within Majestic Oaks to treat the wastewater, but I, I'm very optimistic that we don't even need to consider that at this point. So, so about Pluris's, in case you don't have much information about Pluris's MBR plant, it's located about one mile west of Highway seventeen and one mile north of Sid Berry Road in Hampstead. And that, and then of course, the wastewater treatment facility in Majestic Oaks will be able to be decommissioned and removed once everything has been completed. And so, so I did want to just provide some information about Pluris's plant because it has received really tremendous reviews from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and I put some of this information in our application. But Jim Bushheart, who is a professional engineer with the Department of Environmental Quality, has said that Pluris's MBR facilities represent the highest level of wastewater treatment in North Carolina. And then Jim Gregson, who is also a professional engineer and deputy director of DEQ, Division of Water Quality, has said that Pluris's MBR plants basically produce drinking water quality affluent, which is a tremendous statement about the level of treatment that is occurring. And so, I have provided three slides just to go through very briefly. The first one, it was of course the map of the Majestic Oaks subdivision with the location of the parcels for the wastewater treatment facility that are highlighted. The second is an aerial photograph that shows also where the parcels are located. And then you've seen this one, which shows in red where the lift station will be located, and then the site plan for the lift station. And then this is the landscaping that had been partially installed, but when, when the notice of violation was issued, all work ceased, including finishing up the landscaping. And once the special use permit amendment has been granted, then the landscaping will be completed. And so I'd just like to just go through the information about, to show you that we have met all of the standards for granting this revision to the special use permit. The first standard is, is that the lift station use is listed amongst special uses in the district for which the application is made, or is similar in character to those listed in the district. And the zoning district where the lift station and the wastewater facility is located is residential performance, and the RP zoning district allows the construction and operation of wastewater infrastructure. And I think as an aside, all zoning districts allow the construction and operation of wastewater infrastructure. And of course, without the lift station, it will be impossible to provide the wastewater service to the areas without individual septic systems and to transport the wastewater to Pluris's plant. The second standard is that the lift station use will not impair the integrity or character of the surrounding districts, nor adversely affect the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community, or the immediate neighbors of the property. And so I think we've clearly demonstrated that, and in fact, by allowing this amendment to the special use permit, the lift station will improve the integrity and character of the area and improve the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Majestic Oaks and those who live around the wastewater facility, because of course, it will allow the wastewater treatment facility to be decommissioned and removed from Majestic Oaks.
So I assume that this lift station will have some additional capacity. It won't be at max capacity at day one, will it?
I think that is a question for the engineer, but they're shaking their head saying no.
So, the lift station's designed to handle.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
I'm from the line, seven-five-six Cockle Street, South City, North Carolina. I'm the consulting engineer for Pluris. The lift station is designed to handle the flow from Salters Haven, what is it now? It's Forest Sound, it was.
Gray Bull.
Gray Bull, and then it was something else. So Forest Sound, and Majestic Oaks, and there's like Majestic Oaks, Majestic Oaks West, I think, there's a couple different.
And Hampstead Shopping Center.
And then the, and then the flow from part of the Hampstead Shopping Center. Part of it has its own, that's a little bifurcated over there. So it's sized to handle all those. The wet well is big enough to accommodate more flow. If anything, we'd have to upsize the pumps maybe a little bit, but throw in some honking big pumps and push it all the way to seventeen and get it going. So there is some capacity left in it, but we could increase it if we really had to. So say the neighborhood, the Forest Sound neighborhood itself, say they decided they wanted sewer and they were inputting, we could probably accommodate them with that. And the actual wet well was a little bigger than the original design because during COVID, the mold for the wet well, of all things, was someplace else, and they only had the mold, you know, so, like everything else today.
So you got something bigger?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, for the same price, they said, do you mind if we put it in twelve and O? That's fine, just, you know.
Okay, you answered my question. Thank you, sir.
And then, I'll just go through the rest of the standards just so you can see that we've met them. Also, the lift station use will not constitute a nuisance or a hazard, and as I've mentioned before, clearly it's not going to constitute a nuisance or a hazard. It will improve the situation in Majestic Oaks by allowing the wastewater to be transported out of the community and the wastewater facility to be decommissioned. We've also shown that the lift station use will be in conformity with the Pender County Land Use Plan. Pluris's MBR plant has a capacity to treat the wastewater from the developed. Pluris's MBR plant has a capacity to treat the wastewater from the developments that are connected to the current Majestic Oaks treatment facility, and the construction of the lift station will allow for the, for reasonable and environmentally compliant wastewater service to be provided to the Majestic Oaks subdivision and then other developments and treated at the MBR plant. We've also shown that there are adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, sanitation, or other necessary features, that they are present or will be provided. The overall footprint of the wastewater system will be substantially reduced because of the decommissioning. And then we've shown that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress to minimize a traffic congestion on the public roads, and the lift station will have similar access to the other existing lift stations and the wastewater treatment plant. So access is already available. And technicians from Old North State currently, and from Pluris, once the system is transferred to Pluris, will be, will visit the, the, the lift station, and it will also be monitored remotely by, with telemetry systems as required by North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality regulations. And then we've also shown that the lift station will be on a lot of sufficient size. And again, the lift station is gonna be located on the parcel where the wastewater treatment plant is located, so the, the parcel is well in excess of the size that's required for the lift station. So I think in summary, this is an excellent solution to a problem within the Majestic Oaks community, and we are very anxious to receive approval so that lift station can be completed, and then we'll be in a position to immediately begin to decommission and remove the wastewater treatment plant as soon as we have all of the approvals. And I did wanna mention that I did talk with one of the neighbors who is here, Tammy Bailey, and she had, did have some concerns. My understanding is that Pluris needs to, at least this is the last I heard, is that Pluris needs to be able to look at her property and work with her to determine what the issue is and what can be done, but I don't think that that, my understanding is that that's something that cannot be solved tonight. So my request is that we, that we, that this be approved tonight so they can move forward and with their commitment that they will try to work with her to address her concerns.
Any questions or comments for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sure.
Um, do we have the decommissioning plan?
The...
And I presume it has to be approved by the Utilities Commission, but I'm, I just, I, my one thought here would be, there's a reason when there's a decommissioning, like when people dig in sand, we put requirements on what it's gonna look like afterwards, because nobody wants to spend money on decommissioning, because that just goes away from your bottom line.
Right.
And so, I mean, no, I don't, no offense, I'm not, I don't know that you've ever dea- yeah, that you've decommissioned anything, not like that. But no, it's just that, you know, when we have bar, I mean, you gotta, you know, so that's a, and just like, we're all gonna have issues at some point with all the solar farms, because nobody knows what we're gonna do with those. But anyway, I just, we, we need some, it may be that you wanna have some condition on that.
Yeah, but there is some language in the solar farm, S U Ps, that they gotta be returned back to the original condition, right?
Yeah, and we'll see.
Yeah, so, yeah, we do have a commit, so we have worked through this issue with the Utilities Commission, and John McDonald, who is the owner of Old North State Water Company, has made a commitment to the Utilities Commission about, once the system has been transferred, again, if it, if, if something were to go awry with one of these elements, then the, the system would remain in Majestic Oaks, that I think none of us want to see happen. But the commitment has been made to the Utilities Commission that Old North State will decommission the wastewater treatment plant and the ponds at Old North State Water Company's sole expense. So, and John McDonald and Old North State will not be able to recover any of the money from ratepayers or customers, I mean, that is at their sole expense that they're doing.
They lose. Yep.
So, John McDonald with Old North State, we have committed to the commission to remove the plant, fill in the ponds, remove the fences, and grade and surface, so everything, so it's surface drains and seed and straw. So it'll basically be an open field, when we're done.
Okay.
At his expense.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
And part of the reason for that is, again, it's gonna be there, and also, as Travis was pointing out, we've got still an existing SUP that was amended once, and so what do we do when everything that was in that, even the amended SUP goes away? I mean, because this is...
We void the SUP.
Well, but, I mean, not, that's, that's what I'm saying, we need to address it with this amendment, so we don't, there's not uncertainty, we know what we're doing when they, when they, you know, hopefully, knock on wood, get the lift station working, everything flowing, then we know how that's gonna proceed.
So who, 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 who is the final determining entity that you have completed all your obligations in terms of decommissioning? Is it the state of North Carolina, or is it?
It's, I would say it's both DEQ and the Utilities Commission, because we have obligations about...
So when, so what I'm hearing is, when they get that determination, they need to notify us so that we know, at that point, we can void that prior SUP that's...
Well, and, and again, as long as there's, there's not an additional structure, I think, I'll get Travis on this as well, but, I mean, if they're just filling in, and it's, as you were talking about with the site plan, because the site plan's not gonna reflect reality at that point.
No, but they wasn't addressed on the new...
But they, Pluris or whoever's owning it at the time, will still need the SUP and the variances for the lift station that is in place there, and the reason they couldn't, without the variance, they couldn't move it back far enough because of the existing stuff.
I got it. But they'll, but they'll have this SUP, they can amend that site plan to, to what the conditions are after decommission of the Old North State facilities. So then the site plan will be updated, and they...
Well, if, if, if they're gonna need to do that, we need to make that a condition, because the sole penalty for...
Okay, John.
No, no, I'm just, yeah, if, if you change it, it's to revoke the SUP. There's not amend your thing, and so I'm just, I'm trying to be sure when we get done, we know what's there.
I, I think what I might suggest, if this sounds acceptable, is that a condition could be, once we have approvals for, the necessary approvals for decommissioning, then we will file an updated site plan showing what, what the...
Right, that's, that's what I was heading towards, is once you, once you're done, just show us what it is then, again, so that when all of us aren't here anymore, somebody else can look in the file and see what's, what's supposed to be there.
And we'll probably have to transition the ownership of the SUP from Old North State to Pluris anyway, right?
No, it runs with the land.
It runs with the land?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But hypothetically, if I was gonna make a motion, it would also include what she just said.
Yes, sir.
What about your bet you said?
I'll have a call again.
Sure.
Okay, but in the, the bottom line is, this will give you more capacity, you'll serve more customers, right?
In the MBR, in the offsite, offsite Pluris plant, it will be more capacity to serve more customers, and there will be no wastewater treatment facility.
With minimal impact to the locale, local...
And, and it'll address the issues, there've been, there's the environmental issues, and there've also been concerns about odor and, and things that were a nuisance for the people who lived around the wastewater treatment plant. All of those problems will be addressed and will be completely remedied.
I love it. Can be done, Lord. All right, if you guys don't have any other questions, do we have any signups?
We do. Karen, you, you wanna call any of your other folks?
They're just available for questions, if there was any...
Okay, that's what I was gonna, uh, Tammy Bailey? There, there are a couple non-Pluris, Old North State people.
Hello, my name's Tammy Bailey, I live at one oh two Bay Blossom Court. I am a neighbor, on the corner over there, I share a border with this water treatment plant. I came here with intentions of asking to postpone this for some other issues, but I've since changed my mind, having talked with Mr. McDonald and Mr. Hoffer. I, last time, got promised some things for their special use permit to be passed, and those never happened. So I am only up here so I can have this recorded, so we can then go through that.
And that's why I asked the question that I did earlier on in the meeting.
And, and Mr. Thurman's question is very important to me, too, because there were a lot of things that I wanted conveyed, that Old North State, not Mr. McDonald, Mr. Myers and his predecessors had promised, that didn't happen. He had mentioned that he would take out the discharge pipe and address that. There was a diversion ditch put at the end of the discharge pipe that then funnels the water into Mill Creek, and that, with all hurricanes and stuff, is full of sediment, and it will then flood, and the water's not getting into Mill Creek to runoff, and then it will affect our property. Mr. Hoffer then talked to me about, there was a tile project that was done to lower their surface groundwater, and it actually affected my property when it happened, and that's why the diversion ditch was put in. And he has assured me that once that pump has stopped, that, that water should alleviate, or I'm going to assume that he will address that. So I had wanted to ask for things to convey, what Old North State had promised to convey. One was an issue of my fence falling. I understand depreciation of fence, I understand wood rots and all this stuff, but I put up a fence when it was high and dry, and there was no natural spring or water in need for diversion ditch, and it keeps creeping over. So if the diversion ditch is maintained, it wouldn't. I physically have been doing it, it's dangerous for me to do so, not only because of the animals, the deer, it's, it's just dangerous. I get stuck in the mud, I don't have the equipment to do it. So he, they've also promised to maintain the easement that goes from their plant all the way up. So I had a couple of questions. One would be, is if they only bought the plot, a section for their pump, who, I, I was just recently found out that Old North State will then still own that, where they're gonna need commission, where they're gonna fill in the ponds and that, why wouldn't Pluris just buy that? So if they wanted to increase their capacity and make larger things, they have room to do that. I don't understand who's going to own that, who's going to maintain it, mow it, if it's gonna be a field, it needs to be maintained. So that is one question I would like addressed. They gave me their points of contact, which was something, because I had the plant operator's number. So I've, I've gotten a lot of things accomplished in the hall before we got here, but I did want you all to know that the things that were promised before never did happen. I also would like to relate on behalf of my neighbors at one oh four and one oh six Bay Blossom, and some of the individuals on next door, that ever since the sewer line, which went from my backyard under this natural spring that became new after their project, under Mill Creek, up to the food line, there's been an odor between the food line and that, and I would like that, on their behalf, to be investigated. It could just be natural, since that line was just run, and it needs something that needs to run its course. Have another neighbor on the other side of Chuckanut, he's got some odor issues, if they could have...
Now, there's some odor issue.
They're gonna, they're gonna, if they would've investigated and addressed that, I would appreciate that.
I told the plant director about it numerous times.
I just wanted this on record, because again, I was promised a lot of things, and I spent a lot of time and energy, as you can see, I have all their promises via email, acoustical reports, and all this stuff, and, and it's kinda null and void now, but, so that's really all I have to say, if I could get the answers to those, they said they'd work with me. On record, I would like Pluris to take this over. It will increase my property exponentially, to say I don't live next to a wastewater treatment plant, because it's totally on the other side. So I personally would like Pluris to take this over for, for many reasons, personal reasons, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Leon Els?
My name's Leon Els, I live at three oh two Chuckanut, so right next door to the plant. I'm the one who's had a lot of odor issues. I wish I could record odor, but I can't, because it's really bad, and it makes it unpleasant to, to spend time in my backyard, and I just wanna come up and say I support Pluris taking it over. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe those are all the signups, other than the ones that were here on behalf of the applicant. And I'm not, I'm not addressing any of the questions that were raised.
Odor is something that nobody likes, you know? We, we deposit the gifts in the toilet, and they visit our plant, but there's pipe in between. And so we're, we're not certain what's causing it, but whether we TV camera, we find out where it is or what it is, we'll, we'll, we'll find it. I just wanna give you an update. We, we came up here because Rayford Trask talked us into coming to Pender County, and it all was looking really bright and promising until Rayford decided to get into a lawsuit with his partner that went on for five years, and, and we bled for five years, and we have the financial wherewithal to tolerate that. We, we don't need banks, we're well-capitalized personally and whatnot. And so we, we love the county, we love coming up here, and, and it wasn't a good first five years, but we crossed over the one thousand customer last month, and, and it's climbing. So you folks were gracious enough to give us an SUP for up to three million gallons per day, and someday we'll probably end up tapping that. And I, I, I get up every morning, I get a cup of coffee, and I watch the Star News, and you know, to see that the I forty bypass had groundbreaking occurring, you know, that, that's gonna alleviate a lot of frustration with the folks that live in the Majestic Oaks area, you know, on seventeen. So the future's bright, and we're glad just to be a part of it with you folks, we really are.
We're glad you persevered, we really are. The, the future is very bright, the, the growth's gonna continue.
Yep, we love you guys, and anything we can do to help out, just hold it.
Yep.
So thank you very much for letting us come in.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
I'll just tell you, I was on the board when you first came to town, and we had the, we'd gone down a road before, and, and it didn't work out, and so I did exactly what you said. We, we talked to, to people of some plants that you guys had taken over, and everyone, the common theme was, you do what you say you're gonna do. And you've done that, and that, that means a lot.
One of our pride joys, if I might just real quickly, was we loved putting lights in the baseball field. Some of you folks knew my son was in the NFL, and unfortunately, I told him the NFL stands for not for long, but he got vested, but he got injured, and he's done. But we went up to a, a, a very close friend in Tom Tillis. He helped us out in Webb Creek, where it was a marine community. And as you know, he's, he's big in armed service, and so are we, and so we, they wouldn't allow us to get it in rates, and if, and if you think the North Carolina Utilities Commission, or if you, if you think that your ordinance are tough, Mr. McDonald is not getting out of North Carolina before they make sure he closes that exactly, as they and the DEQ have said, and, and, and that's funny sometimes, but it's not so funny others, so they're, they're stickler. But we went up to Webb Creek, and Tom helped us out, and so you can't put things like Kwanzaa lights on baseball fields, or, or golf stuff, or whatnot, in the rates, and you shouldn't, okay? So my partner and I built a really cool kids park up there, and we had a plaque made, and we made it, and we named it Camp Tillis. And it was, it was just, so when we get into communities, you guys know us, and ladies, when we get into communities, we become part of community. We wanna be part of that community. We don't want to just be a service provider. So as projects come up, we, we still, I think Randy's handing out a couple of high school senior biology scholarships, I'm a PE civil engineer, so we try to help in those kind of things. So you're just another county that we love doing work in.
And we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
No, sir.
Well, I think we're at the point of considering a motion. We'll close the public hearing.
Vote for approval, Mr. Chairman, with the caveat remarks by the attorney regarding, you know, going back, modify site plan, I think's summarizing how she said it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Safe travels home.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hey, this is my last one.
But you should. But you should.
You don't wanna see what's in my closet.
We all got closets.
See you later.
All right, we're gonna move on to item twenty-one point three. Mr. Henley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, for the third time tonight, Vanessa Lacer.
Okay, so I'm presenting case twenty twenty-one fifteen, zoning text amendment. Pender County is the applicant and is requesting the approval of a zoning text amendment to the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, the request is to amend Article Three, Sections three one one, pre-submital meeting with staff, three one two, application requirements, three five three, pre-application conference, three five four, review, three nine two, pre-application conference, three nine three, review, three ten two, pre-application conference, and three fourteen three, pre-application conference, including various workflows, figures within Article Three. This request revises... This request revises the current requirements for pre-submittal meetings, fees, and waiting periods for application submission in order to improve the efficiency of the application review process.
So tell us why you pulled out the payment of fees initially.
So the payment of fees is changing with this proposal in its workflow. The technology that we have right now, the platform is called Intergov, and it allows us to invoice customers through email and then they can pay online or pay, you know, with a check or over the phone as they always have before. So really, the, the removal of fees from the requirement for, so let me back up. Currently, application submission, at the time of application submission, fees must be 100% paid. Our workflow through Intergov allows our planners to review the application, enter the information into Intergov, and then invoice the customer. And Intergov calculates whatever that amount might be. So really, we're not removing fees. We're just changing the workflow to allow us to use Intergov more efficiently and allow the customers to have that interaction where they can pay online.
So what happens if they withdraw their, you guys review it and they withdraw it?
Travis, can you answer that question?
When, when we're saying review it.
So we're out of fees?
No. When, when we're saying review it, all we're reviewing it for is to make sure the application is complete. We're not providing any sort of. Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're just accepting their application?
Correct. We're not, we're not providing, okay, this road's in the wrong place. You need buffering here. No, we're not doing any of that.
You're just reviewing it for completeness?
Correct.
And saying, yeah, it's complete. You can now pay your fees and we'll start the process.
Correct.
Okay.
But, you know, as I understand, as I understand, this Intergov has a lot of benefits and will have more benefits as time goes by, correct?
More benefits as time goes by is correct.
Yes. But, you know, one department can know what the other department can do. Things will flow from one group to the next. Save a lot of people from going to, having to have so much foot traffic going from one building to the next. I mean, it's a lot of, there's a lot of upside.
Can hold hands and say kumite.
And everybody knows where it is in the process.
So, back to my original question. You're changing the sequence of payment with these amendments, and you're also making it optional to have a free, a free submission meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're specifying the instances where a pre-application conference may be scheduled. And we're taking out all the shall be schedules.
Correct. So the pre-application conference is proposed to be a recommendation versus a requirement. We do have applicants who are well-versed in this process and don't necessarily need a pre-submittal meeting, so it's an opportunity to reduce unnecessary meetings.
Yeah, I, I understand the purpose. So are there any other substantive changes that you're requesting revision to?
The only other substantive change is the removal of the 30-day waiting period.
For what?
For application submission. So currently, we have a 30-day waiting period between the pre-submittal meeting and the application submission.
So that, that cuts down on the boilerplate stuff. I mean, the boilerplate stuff, why do you have to wait if it's, I guess, more stuff in the same neighborhood or the same, same people are familiar when working together? There's a lot of reasons why you don't need to wait that 30 days.
And I do appreciate the fact that it was redlined so nicely.
I did too.
And it reads a lot more.
Streamlined?
Streamlined and concise and meaningful and I like it. You ready for a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Shipley. I see you jumping out the door. Don't talk yourself out of anything here.
So I realize I'm about to muddy the waters at 8:12 PM, but I do have to ask the question about the consistency with regard to environmental health, for example, when requiring fees in advance in their process versus this. So we're not being consistent. Is that, am I, am I missing something here? Well, I've muddied the waters at 8:12 PM.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
They said not to talk us out of anything. Okay. It is, I mean, they, they.
You could have fixed all this before they ever got here.
I, I.
You want to pull it and put it on another.
This is going in the right direction.
I think what we need to do is we need to talk to environmental health about getting on board with this.
I, sure.
So are you saying, are you saying that we are, this was not ripe for consideration, for board's consideration?
I'm not saying.
I think he was using it as an opportunity to make a point to environmental health, maybe, but I'm not going to say that.
We need to have that discussion.
Well, that, yeah, that's a staff, that's a staff thing that needed to happen before it got here, right? Am I right?
Totally, totally agree. All points are very well taken. However, the Unified Development Ordinance is only for planning. Nothing else touching it.
Yeah, but you can change the other one to.
Sure.
Be consistent with this. Or, or not.
Or the board could, because I mean, there's a scheduled fees that you set.
I'm not, I'm not considering anything that's not over here.
Right, no, no.
The only thing that I'm pointing out is that, that it's different for different departments, and I think that makes it confusing to our citizens. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, you guys got to fix that and bring it back and, and we'll, we'll review, whatever you recommend specifically. All right. Are you done? Don't talk yourself out of anything.
I'm not going to talk myself out of anything. Oh, I promise. The only thing I would, I would say for this amendment is that this is how modern, high-functioning planning departments operate and this is what the board should expect of.
Well, how'd you get it done?
I like it. I like it. And you were, you were doing, you were meeting our expectations and beyond. Continue to do so.
I'm going to end the public hearing.
Vote for approval, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.
We are adjourned.
Good night.